To call the meeting to order, please. Roll call, Christian?
Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
Here.
And Mayor Mersch.
Here. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Bea, would you like to lead us this evening?
Sure. All right, hands on your card and ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, under item number four, we didn't have... Sheriff's? Sheriff's Department isn't here yet?
Not here yet.
Okay, well, we may go back to item number four because we are going to have our, probably the core deputies coming to introduce themselves from LA Sheriff's Department. And also, approve the order of the agenda. I would like to see if we would consider moving item 14A, the coyote management issue, up to, ahead of... So between 11 and 12, if that's all right?
Okay.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so, now, moving on to blue folder items, I see none.
None.
Any public comment? Oh, should we go, do we want to go back now? We have one of our deputies.
Is it someone else or just?
My fault.
Okay.
Is the only one tonight sorry?
That's okay, you know we won't hurt you, it's okay.
I think she's prepared.
Sergeant McCoy was going to introduce you and another deputy.
Unfortunately Sergeant McCoy is out of training and I believe our captain was also busy, so I'm your person tonight.
Well, we're glad you're here Deputy Lopez, so we're going to go back to item number four.
Perfect.
You'd like to introduce yourself and...
Yes, so my name is Deputy Darlene Lopez. I've been a core deputy, so Community Relations Deputy for the city of Rolling Hills for the past, I believe, almost two years now. So any issues you guys do have with the city, in the city, with neighbors and so off, so on, I am your point of contact.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Your favorite city.
These are my favorite cities.
Tonight, yeah, as Pat says, tonight.
Meetings are being recorded, so...
Yeah, and if you guys have any questions, let me know. An email right now, anything.
Any questions for Deputy Lopez?
Well, I would say what are the issues that you're finding in our community? The prevalent ones that you're dealing with?
So as of right now, there hasn't been any, aside from the burglaries that recently happened. It's my understanding now that, I believe, gate supervisors are now asking for ID to enter the premises. So I think that's, that's good, you know, just to keep a record of it. Other than that, just, you know, asking the community to just take more security measures when it comes to their home. Lights, you know, cameras and whatnot. Again, I've discussed these topics in other meetings with you guys. So that's pretty much it. Other than that, I don't think there has been any other issues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, back to item number seven. Any matters, any public comment on non-agenda items? I'm looking around to see if there's anybody besides you, Mr. Visco. Well, okay. Your item might be on the agenda.
Should I go now or should I?
No, no, you go, these are for items not on the agenda. Mr. Visco?
Thank you, Alfred Visco, Centring Road. I know how enthusiastic the City Council is in getting involved in the dealings with Sacramento, but I thought I might bring this up. Apparently, apparently there's a bill in the Assembly, Assembly Bill 1554, which would add wildfire fuels reduction projects to the list of exemptions related to the California Environmental Quality Act. I think that is something that would be worthwhile looking into and perhaps agendizing and see if that's something the City Council might wish to support. Obvious, the obvious advantage is that if we get that into the list of exemptions under SEQA, we don't have to worry about SEQA when we do wildfire abatement. So I thought I'd bring that to the city's attention.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Do you have your comments?
Not on, items not on the agenda, okay? Hearing none, move to the consent calendar. Council's wishes on that?
Under the consent calendar?
I'll second it.
In favor? Okay, moving right along, thank you very much. Okay, so this is where we're going to go out of sequence. We're going to do item 14A.
I thought that was after...
Did I do something wrong?
You're right.
Okay, so 14A, which is the coyote and the contract. We have some representatives here from the county, Waits and Measures. Like to introduce yourself and...
Mayor and members of City Council, this item on the agenda was placed at the direction of City Council to discuss the city's current coyote management, the contract with the Los Angeles County Agricultural and Commission of Waits and Measures, and to have a new discussion regarding the possibility of entering into a agreement with a private contractor. Before I hand this over to Christian to present, I'd like to acknowledge that we both have Elizabeth Bondi and Nam Nguyen, which are our Waits and Measures inspectors. They will be providing some information and just so you know they have John Fernando retired. And now we both have, these two inspectors will be taking his place. So I will pass it on over to Christian to present the report, a brief one, and then we'll talk about next items.
Mayor and council members, as the city manager mentioned, this is coming back to you based on a referral from councilmembers Black and Derringer. We did a similar but lighter presentation back in July for you regarding the existing contract with Waits and Measures. And subsequent to that, that presentation to you, we actually had a detailed meeting with the Waits and Measures staff, including Nam and, and his superiors, to gain a better understanding as staff at that time as to what services they provide the city and how we should be interacting and working with them as a conduit for residents that are having issues with, with coyotes in general. And the meeting was extremely informative. As you'll see in the staff report, I laid out a variety of details that were presented to us. The biggest one, I think, that we should point out is that, from the perspective of and which we get most calls around this time of year regarding coyote abatement, was that Waits and Measures does not perform any abatement measures unless it is a situation where the coyote is a clear and present danger to interactions with human beings. So a lot of times we get calls specific to pets, or "I've seen a coyote in my yard," or "I've seen a coyote in the street," or "it followed me." But it's when there is a situation of human endangerment that Waits and Measures may take different measures. What they do and what Liz and Nam can talk to us about today is that they provide a whole host of educational opportunities to work with the residents. They are here two days a week now since Fernando has retired. Some of those educational materials that they would present residents are in the staff report and were attached to the staff report. And also, I do want to point out, attached to the staff report was a sample of an invoice from this past August showing that when there is a situation that rises to the occasion of requiring them to come out and perform measures above and beyond education, what those costs look like. Waits and Measures does not charge us for the educational component. We do have a not-to-exceed $25,000 a year contract with them to come out and provide services, and their services are above and beyond just coyotes, I should point out. They, and they can explain in further detail what that is, but other rodents, ground squirrels, whatnot, issues that we may need service with. With that said, the reason why, the main reason why this conversation has come back to you tonight is to discuss, do we need or should we consider the idea of hiring some private contractors? In this case, as Councilmember Black had asked, Fernando Barrera has left Waits and Measures. He's gone out on his own as a private contractor. The city of Rolling Hills Estates has already entered into an agreement with him. As outlaid in your staff report, we do have the hourly rates that he charges. And one thing that we should note is that individuals like Mr. Barrera, or in the case of Rancho Palos Verdes, who uses Jimmy Rizzo, they charge for things other than abatement. Actually, Mr. Rizzo is specifically for abatement services, whereas Mr. Barrera provides consultation services, education, similar things to what he did for our residents while he was serving as an employee of Waits and Measures. With that said, I'll end my staff report there, and we are available for questions. But I think, right now, to really provide a more well-rounded perspective on the services that we are already provided, we did ask Liz and Nam to be here tonight, and so I will hand it over to them to talk a little bit more about the services that Waits and Measure has provided us and all the other peninsula cities for many years.
I have a question, but should I hold that till after their presentation? It's about the fee schedule.
Yes.
I don't understand the way it's written at the bottom of page 92. And this is for Jimmy Rizzo, I presume?
That's correct.
Does the cost for every 10 business days is $2,300?
That's correct. That's correct, I'm putting out tracks.
So it's...
We just took...
$4,600 plus almost $5,000 a month, is that what it is?
I believe the way it is written here is that the consultant has a cost of services being, within a 10-day period, $2,300, but their services are twice a month for a not-to-exceed amount of $4,600 per month.
Okay, it's just kind of awkwardly, so it's a $60,000 contract, roughly $2,300 every... I mean, if you, I could do the math on that easily enough, but it's just, okay. Then the other one is even harder for me to understand, the top of page 93. It has an hourly fee, and then it gets onto trapping, one week, five days, $1,000. So would that be $1,000 a week?
Yes, and this is the way Mr. Barrera had presented his fee schedule to us. So my understanding is that for him to perform trapping services over the period of one week, it's a $1,000 set fee. If he's doing it for two weeks, just double that. Usually, what he would do in the past when he was up here was come, examine, figure things out from his perspective, set traps, come back, check traps, come back, you know, multiple times to see, you know, whether the abatement process was working properly or not.
So the hourly fees are on top of trapping?
The hourly fees are, as you see there, are specific to consultation and education. So, and then the two bottom fees are specific to trapping.
Any other questions before we hear from Waits and Measures?
Thank you.
Well, again, my name is Nam. I'm the supervising inspector for the South District of this area, which incorporates all of the peninsula area. Liz Bondi is one of our staff members. So we're here together, teaming up, to provide the normal coyote services that you guys have seen over the years, especially what you've seen with Fernando doing. We are pretty much continuing that service to today. So generally, when anybody has any issues with coyotes, we will do what we've done before. If there is any incident or report of a coyote situation, we'll come by to investigate, see what the situation is. Because one of our main goals is to protect the public, personal welfare of somebody. We want to make sure that a person may not get, they won't get injured or get bitten by a coyote. So we'll go out there to investigate, see what the situation is. We'll provide public education as much as possible, and then if possible, if it's warranted, we'll also do trapping services. A lot of people are scared about coyotes, and the main concern is that when it comes to coyotes, they're afraid of getting bitten or something like that. But generally, it takes a lot of steps in order to get there. And what, what we find important is that the education component to prevent the, what leads up to a coyote bite. And usually, what that happens for us is that someone's been feeding the coyotes, or somehow they have lost their fear. So because oftentimes when people see coyotes, they generally don't do anything, so the coyote gets habituated to the area. So those are things we try to look into, and we talk to the residents about that, and we try to educate them. And then when it's warranted, of course, we will trap coyotes that we feel are, are a danger to the public.
And, yeah, it's not just site visits to individuals who are worried, but we could also provide presentations to communities or HOAs, whoever, whoever requests it.
When you do that type of a presentation, whether it would be to the city or to the HOA, is that included in our contract, or is there an extra fee for that?
As of right now, since there is funding through the Board of Supervisors in this area, everything is going for, going through the Janice Hans district.
That, the temporary funding that she, the emergency-type funding that she had?
Generally, when we're going to the meet with people, we don't charge for that. It's only when we actually do some sort of trapping is when we would charge. But education's important to us, so that's a more of a service that we provide.
So even if it was education to a group, like you mentioned, the, after any funding from the supervisor that was expired, that's still something that you would consider doing as part, that's, education is education, whether you do it with an individual or in a group?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And we also provide talks on mobile phones as well. That's usually the starting point. And then, once we get a feel for how the neighborhood reacts, then we can try to see if we can get the community together, whether they're... Liz has done a lot of interactions with that, so she's done a lot of Zoom calls, for example, or we can just go to the HOA meetings and talk to them as well.
I thought I understood that you only respond to requests from the city at this, at this time, is that correct?
We can, we can talk to anybody, but the way the contract was set up for this particular area is that initially, whenever there is some sort of coyote query question, it goes to the city first, and then they will come to us. Because before, we had any type of contract through or funding with the Board of Supervisors, that was how it was set up initially. The city would deal with it first, and they would call us, and then we'd come out to talk to them.
Okay, I understand that policy, but I don't think it was, it worked like that previously. I think people could call Fernando directly.
I think that because of how the, it was set up, and Fernando was close to the area, they kept, they would call him personally, so it kind of just interrupted the order of things.
Okay, so you're not taking those kind of calls now?
We're trying to go back to how it was initially with the contract. So whenever there is a query that we get, we try to refer to the city.
Got another question about this invoice. This couldn't be a typical invoice, it's $5,000 for one month. It is typical?
That was, well, so, I wouldn't say there's a typical invoice, right? This is, this is the most recent amount, but the dollar amounts are, are, yeah. That's, that's what you would normally see. So, and as you'll see on this invoice too, it's requested, at that time, Nedra Corkin was our temporary administrative assistant, so she was, the requests were coming in the city. Nedra was reaching out to Waits and Measures to, to ask for these particular abatement issues.
Well, if this is typical, then we're paying $60,000 a year, is that right?
No, no, no. So we have a not-to-exceed contract in, within a fiscal year period of $25,000. So these go towards that $25,000. But this, but we are not receiving an invoice like this every month, just so you're aware.
Okay, it's not typical, then, that's...
That, that, well, that's, I mean, it's typical of when there is trapping costs or abatement costs. It is, that does not happen all the time.
So let me follow up a question on that. So if we have a limited amount of our contract, and if we shoot $5,000 here and $5,000 there and $5,000 here, would we then say we've spent all of our money and we would no longer have the services of the county?
Well, my understa, since in the time that I have been here, you have not exceeded your, your $25,000 limit. With that said, if we were getting close to the contractual ceiling, if you will, we would probably have to come back to the council for authorization to put more money into that particular well in the event that we needed some type of abatement services, above and beyond the $25,000.
Does staff keep some type of track so that we know if we're getting to that?
Correct, so staff, staff on a quarterly basis reviews budget, and so we would naturally just keep track of our invoices. To my knowledge, this is the only, this is the only invoice that we've received since the fiscal year started.
But it is a fifth of the budget.
Yeah.
And, and I don't want to go into other services that they provide, but there, you know, you mentioned ground squirrels and things like that. You know, we have people that have issues with ground squirrels and so forth, so I think, I just want to make sure that there's a tracking on that.
When did Fernando retire? I can't remember, was it?
Just after January.
September-ish?
September, late September.
So this is Fernando. Okay, how many, just a specific question, how many animals have you caught, come out and trapped since Fernando retired? Peak, he retired in fall? Since you retired, since he retired, correct. How many have you two done?
None, because it's an off-season right now.
No, it's not. I have a tremendous coyote problem in my yard today and yesterday, so it's not off-season. All right.
And I have a question too. So is the $25,000 that we're limited to, the supervisor Hans' money is over and above that? Is that correct?
Yes, so as you see in the staff report, Supervisor Hans' allocation, which Councilmember Wilson and others had requested she redo again this year. And I, I'm not sure how many years that particular thing was going on, but it initially, as the staff report says, was designed to just be a one-year program for additional education and the ability for Fernando to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, from your guys' perspective, to be more available in a dedicated sense to the peninsula, because they service, you know, a much larger section of the county, right? So, but that was primarily towards education and, and the consultation services, so that, you know, if people needed him, you know, he would be able to respond in a more timely manner.
And do we know when the current allocation that she's given us ends?
It's for one year, so that...
What's starting when, though?
So fis, it starts for fiscal year '23-'24, so that would expire June 30.
In June, okay. All right, and then have you guys done anything with ground squirrels and gophers? We have a lot of residents that have a big problem with those two burrowing animals that are undermining slopes and, and the integrity of their foundation, you know, their soil.
I don't think we've been requested for gopher service, for example. Ground squirrels are a little bit more difficult now, just because of the new rules regarding like the pesticides to be used for them. We do provide trapping service for ground squirrels, but that tends to be expensive. But for gophers, we also, we provide a bait, well, we provide a pest, a bait, I should say, that would treat them, not as effective as other locations, but we do provide that type of service.
Have you been out at all for ground squirrels in our city since Fernando retired? Have either of you been out for ground squirrels?
We've never been requested for that.
Yeah, I don't think Fernando treated for them either.
Yes, he did.
Oh, he did?
He did, routinely. But you have not, okay.
And to that point, Councilmember Black, staff has not received any requests for ground squirrel or gopher bait?
We had someone here, Bree Holtz, and a, and a council member in this chamber saying that the city should be taking a proactive management, because it's destroying our hill and she's going to have a slope failure, which is accurate. If you see her hill, it's shocking.
Yeah, and gophers have been a problem here for decades, and so there's holes everywhere.
Yeah, no, I meant we hadn't received any calls to further on... Yes, I recall, I recall that converse, yeah.
That counts.
Okay.
Okay, okay, all right, that's answered my question.
Any other questions from council before we open it to the public? Can we... I'd like to have you stay up if you, if you can, because some of the questions may be directed.
You should go sit down, then we can take public comment.
Okay, back, and then if we need you to come back, thank you.
And then we'll call you up for additional questions.
Okay, so good.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone want to like to speak on this subject? Mr. Constant?
Hello, everyone, my name is Nikos Constant, I live at 25 George F. Road. And my family was attacked by coyotes about a month, exactly a month ago today. First of all, I actually just want to thank some community members in the city for our, for some, for the support they've given my family, the Vintners, Fred Visco, Stacy Marcoulis, Kristen from the RHCA, Karina from the city, and of course, the City Council and mayor for doing this so quickly. Just to preface this, I'm, I just started a teaching position at Pitzer College in the Environmental Analysis Department, so I'm kind of up on this type of stuff. And really what I want to get to is talking about the budget you discussed, the clear and present danger issue, the duty to protect issue, and something which I'm going to call rural does not equal reckless. But let me just tell you what happened, because I think that's probably the best place to start. So the attack was on my wife Linda and our two dogs, Willow and Waylon. This happened around 7:00 in the morning, right outside of our kitchen door. It wasn't like it was some rural situation, it was literally right outside of our kitchen door, next to our patio. I was in the middle of filing for a hearing that I was on a deadline for when it happened. It was a foggy rainy morning, and I hear Linda screaming. At this point, I don't know what's happened. I find her at the kitchen door, holding Willow, who is limp but alive, and both are covered in blood. And Linda's screaming at me, Waylon is gone, they took him, they took him. At that moment, I'm not sure whose blood was on who at this point. I asked Linda if she was bit, because I can see that Willow was, and Linda basically says, "I don't think so," and she basically says, "You have to go get Waylon." Now, our son is there, because it was, he hadn't gone to school yet, and of course, he's curious, and he's in the middle of us, as he always is. And I basically tell Linda, I say, "You and Blaze are going to go directly to the emergency hospital for the vet, and you're going to take Willow and save her, and I'm going to go get Waylon." And I basically say, "Look, this is just a part of life." And of course, Linda is already guilt-tripping, and I say, "Hey, look, you can't ever second-guess yourself on stuff like this, you just have to go." And so she goes. I say I'm going to go with Waylon, and the last thing they hear me say is that I need a weapon. And so what I do is I basically, you know, we have a six-year-old, so it's not like we have a weapon-heavy household currently. I go get, I have a pretty large Maglite that the cops used to always carry around. And I take that and my walking stick, which is my normal way to check out the canyon, not with the Maglite, not thinking that I need a way, a weapon, and I go down there. The thing is, is, you know, it's quiet, it is eerie, it is so empty. I'm calling Waylon's name, he is not barking or anything like that, I hear nothing. And I'm like, how am I going to find this little guy? And then I look down and I, and I just see a, maybe a, a, what is, it's rainy, so I'm surprised, I'm seeing all of these footprints going into the canyon, and I just follow the footprints. It's basically about halfway down, and I, and there it is. It's six or seven coyotes, two of them are on Waylon. Three or four of them see me coming and kind of scatter and start going back, and I just charge them. I sort of have the high ground, so I just basically go after, I go after, and I'm trying to save Waylon. I take the, the Maglite, and I get to them, and two of them are just so feasting on him that I basically have to hit them, I hit one of them in the head with the Maglite, they scatter. I'm going to be honest, I was totally stupid for doing this, you know? This wasn't something that anybody should do, but I was just completely in the zone. And I hit them back, they scatter, I grab Waylon and I start jamming up the hill, and I keep looking back behind them, me, to make sure that they're not coming after me. Waylon's guts are streaming out of him, and I'm basically putting them back inside of him, but he's still warm, and so I still have hope. I take him up, all the way up the hill, I immediately get him as comfortable as I think I can make him, and I get in the car, and I head myself to the emergency. I call my wife, my wife is like, "We're not even there yet, I can't even believe you got him so fast." And so that just shows you just how in the zone... him so fast. And so that just shows you just how in the zone that you have to be in this kind of situation. Unfortunately, Waylon died. Willow lived. So, you know, comme ci, comme ça. To get to the points that I wanted to get to, when I hear this budget of 25,000, I mean, I'm 15,000 into saving Willow right now. So 25 is not a whole lot of dough when it comes to this kind of thing. As far as the clear and present danger situation, and I'm going to say, and it being the off-season, there's seven healthy coyotes. Look, these aren't, I've been, I, when we lived in Silver Lake, we had another coyote attack with, with a dog. That was a scrawny coyote, that was easy. I got that dog back. It wasn't, it was, it was almost kind of like a joke, that attack. These are seven healthy coyotes. We've had great, we've had great precipitation over the last couple of years. There's a lot of food out there, they're healthy. These seven, it's going to be springtime, that's going to be 10, maybe more. This is a pack, and I'm just going to, this is, I'm kind of making a joke here, but I'm kind of not. At the last, at the meeting the other night for the RHCA, talking about a gang of Chileans, I mean, if there were 14 Chileans cruising around here, we would be up in arms. And these are our version of Chileans right here. It is not a good thing to have happen. It's very dangerous. So definitely, the clear and present danger is right now. Now, look, I think that there's a duty to protect. I believe, I'm an attorney, I feel like there's a duty to protect. That happens in any community. I think that along with this wildlife, sort of county thing, I think that we need to talk about having a volunteer wildlife representative or physician that has a warning and a tracking system. I'll volunteer for that, I would set that up. I think that we need to be a lot more proactive about the wildlife around here. And then finally, not finally, but in terms of the, the rural nature, you know, I, I keep hearing that, that rural word being, being used. Rural does not mean reckless. We're not stupid here. We have a problem, and it is, it needs to be taken care of immediately. We cannot use the rural setting. We're not that rural, everybody. The 110 freeway is right over there, you know, we, we need to take care of this. And then just another thing, you know, my wife is an equestrian. She is hardcore into animals, she can handle herself. It's lucky she was. I think that this could have gone way worse, that she was a part of this attack if she didn't have her wits about her with animals. So it's something that, that you need to be prepared for this. As far as my son, you know, right now, he's basically saying, I mean, I said, he says, said, where are you going tonight? I said, I'm going down to the city council, we're going to talk about coyotes. His answer is, don't talk about coyotes, you won't come back. So there's a little bit of a traumatic situation here going on. Not just a little, there is a traumatic situation going on. So look, my concern is really from my wife and son, the dogs too. The dogs are important, but right now, we got people here, there's at least a pack of seven coyotes. Just yesterday, I was driving over to my parents' house, they live in Rancho Palos Verdes. I saw two coyotes going basically where George F. meets El Concho, and they, they were jam, they, they saw me, I saw two, they were jamming down the, the trail right there that goes between two houses. I keep driving, there's somebody walking by himself, one of my neighbors. I, I pull down the window and say, hey, there's coyotes right over there, you've got to be really careful. Stacy has talked about these coyotes with me after the meeting the other night. This is real, it is actionable, we cannot be negligent here, we cannot be reckless. I, I see this as a complete assault and battery on my family. And thank you very much for your help. Oh, actually, and one more thing, City of Torrance, Fred Visco turned me on to this. So City of Torrance has a coyote management program that is quite extensive, with a lot of really great information. I really suggest you look at it. What they have here is updated summary of reported coyote December 31st to January 6th. It's a nice, it's a nice reporting system. This is, we need this. We need to know what we're dealing with here. And I think that, you know, this is Torrance, we're more sophisticated than they are. Thanks a lot.
Needs to know that Torrance is only doing coyotes, we were doing it before that they were, but I like that.
We're more sophisticated than they are.
My child too?
Of course.
I'm Stacy Markolos, I'm Nikos' neighbor, H. or Jeff. I had an incident with the coyotes last week. There were six coyotes. I was standing in my yard, just to make this really quick, because that, he summed it all up, but standing in my yard with four gardeners, so it was five humans. They were digging a hole for me or something, to plant something. These, this, these two coyotes come across, my dogs run to the fence, they're going crazy. I take my rake, and I just take my rake to make noise on the fence, the metal part of the fence, so it's going, you know. And the two coyotes kind of took off for a few minutes. So within a couple of minutes goes by, they come back and bring their whole pack. That's that entire six coyotes. With, so we're watching them on the hillside, they're like, I mean, 60, 70 feet away from us. They could care less that we're there. My dogs are going nuts, like, they could care less. But, I mean, they're hunting, okay? They're hunting. So I understand that, right? But they're hunting as a pack, which kind of freaked me out. They've been harassing my dogs, antagonizing my dogs, they're, they've marked my entire perimeter of my property with coyote poop everywhere. It's everywhere. You walk down George F., there is, it's everywhere. You could, you could see how large its pack is. This gal is walking down the easement where we're standing, literally, the coyotes are on the hill. So this is, this is the situation that happened. She's there with her little black dog, this cute little lady, and we're like, there are six coyotes right there, you really shouldn't go hike right now. Okay? So she's like, oh, I think I'm okay. She picks up her little dog. She keeps walking, and two of the coyotes, very large coyotes, took off after her and her dog. So I screamed. We, we watched it happen on the hill. They took off like as fast as they could run toward her. So, you know, I screamed, ran down there, she came in, picked up her dog, and decided not to, you know. But we literally saved her, or saved the dog, or whatever, but six? I'm just saying, the way they're packed, this group specifically, I've had a lot of, you know, I've seen coyotes, obviously, since I've lived here, one or two, or two together now and then. This is different. I see them hunting ground squirrels, hunting, we, I have videos of them. I've always been very aware, but never have I had this situation where there are six, they attacked a neighbor's dog, thank God, his son wasn't outside. So why do we want to wait? Okay? Why do we want to wait for this specific pack, who's probably the same pack that's harassing your street? Why do we want to wait for a human incident to happen? Why not just trap this bunch, set the traps around my yard if you want, they're all there every day. They were just there on Sunday, all six, on Sunday. So, all six. We also saw a female with two pups that crossed the street. So there's more, there's more than seven. He saw seven, I saw six. I think we should do something about it. Ground squirrels is another story, you know, I'm not going to spend any more time on that, but it's, it's obviously an issue. But I think this is, this takes precedent, for sure, the coyotes.
Thank you, Stacy. Gene?
Gene Hanbo, 33, Portuguese Bend Road. Nikos, I'm sorry to hear about that.
Thank you.
To your family, I, it sounded like a lot of trauma there, and I, I understand. I have a question, though, to the officers. How often are these encounters with human beings such as Mr. Clement went through? How often do you see that in the county of Los Angeles? And generally, what is the threat of coyotes to human beings, whether they're small coyotes, large coyotes, old people, young people? What is the danger to the human beings?
I would like to hear your answer.
And Nam, if you could come back up, please, so that the recording gets picked up? And Elizabeth?
So one of the main things about our program is definitely the prevention of attacks against people. And this program was founded because of that. You might have heard the Kelly Keen incident in about, I think, 1983 or something like that. So in regards to people being attacked by coyotes, it's very rare. Things that would happen to that is that, well, the incidents that we've seen so far is that someone's been feeding the coyotes. Incidents, for example, in Altadena, someone was leaving raw steak, hot dogs, and so forth, and that changes behavior. If there's any type of man-made thing that attracts coyotes, they can change behavior, and that makes them stick around longer. Some incidents, for example, in Huntington Beach a couple of years ago, one of the incidents that I've heard about was that it was due to homeless people, they were feeding the coyotes. So things like that are what would cause a coyote to attack people or bite person. And generally, usually, they're not biting to, when it comes to people, they're not biting to kill, but they're trying to bite to investigate, see what, see what, what it is, pretty much. They don't have the greatest vision, so they're trying to look for a food source. Somebody, sometimes people, if they're feeding them, they might accidentally get confused whether they are, they don't understand the concept of someone feeding them food, but they might be a competition for a food resource. So that's, so that's why a coyote bite might occur. Another thing is for children, since they're short and the small, since coyotes don't have the greatest vision, when they see something run, they're going to chase after it, of course. And so if you're small, unfortunately, that's, that's something that will trigger coyote, coyote to go after that person. But overall, coyotes' attacks on people are generally very rare, but it does happen. So we're trying to avoid that from, from happening in the first place.
Yeah. So statistically, there's only been one death from coyotes in the history of the United States in 1983. The rest have been bites. And yeah, in my experience, for the, the stories that were relayed just now, there are similar stories in the county of people being stalked by coyotes while walking their dogs, but an actual attack on the dog is pretty rare.
Not that rare.
No.
Not that rare.
Well, and it can be, it can be rare, but when it happens to you, it now, it's not, it isn't rare to you. So I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Constant, so we'll get back to you.
I also have a comment. Gene, is that answering your?
Your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's rare, but it does happen.
It does happen. I would also acknowledge that this area is different from the rest of LA County as well. It is more, a different terrain, so it might have a different behavior in this area for coyotes, I mean.
And can I just ask one other question before you go back? The, it, the issue that's been talked about here is, those of us that have lived here for a long time, we're used to the onesie-twosie coyotes. This issue of the pack and the number that we're seeing, I think we all, those of us that have, you know, Leslie gave us a book about coyotes, and you know, we all studied and everything. You know, we understand that pack behavior can be different than the individual coyote, or even a mother with pups. But when you get, you know, five, six, however many in a pack, they even approach you differently. You know, the two may come, and then there's the two more around here, and two more around there. Hearing what you've heard today so far, do you think that the fact that we're dealing with a pack mentality and behavior changes what you're saying about the chances of human encounter?
It's something worthy to investigate. So we would talk to everybody individually about that, just to, you know, just go through the whole entire process, see what it is. But it wouldn't be worrisome, of course. Well, we would investigate that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Just how big of an area, I mean, the coyotes, I get it if they're kind of roaming a giant area, but I live down here at the bottom, and we have five or six coyotes in our yard. We have a camera, we call it the coyote cam, you can watch them all the time. It's constant, and they're way bigger. We have a 90-pound dog. She's not allowed outside by herself, she's always with us. But my wife does go hiking with her off-leash all the time, and there's coyotes that will track them and whatever. So now, it's getting a little more armed with my wife, so it's kind of interesting to see how that's escalating on how her hiking in the canyons. But they live at George F., which is up the hill? I mean, it's only, whatever, yeah, a mile, mile and a half up the hill. My six are their six, most likely?
No.
Or do you think my six that live over here where the, our neighbors across the canyons brushes is different than theirs? Because it feels to me like they'd be different areas. Do you have a gut?
Territory ranges of coyotes are extremely variable. We're helping do research on that right now by putting GPS collars on them. So some coyotes will just stay in somebody's backyard, and another coyote will have the whole mountain range as its territory. So, but it is closely related to the amount of food and habitat in the area. So the more food and habitat you have, the less the terr, the smaller the territory size could be. So, so yes, there could be potentially more.
Well, the amount of rabbits we have is unbelievable.
Yeah.
Thank you. Arlene?
Hi, Arlene Hanbo, 33, Portuguese Bend Road. I've been in front of the council before talking about coyotes, but just as a reminder, I'm one of the few residents that thinks coyotes at least contribute to some of the management of the wildlife in Rolling Hills, specifically ground squirrels, gophers, rabbits. I was one of the few residents who did not sign an agreement to let Fernando trap on our property, which wasn't a problem, because everybody around us did. So Fernando used to park right above us on Portuguese Bend Road. I watched him every morning when he would come out and park there, observing coyote behavior. But one thing we never really got from Fernando, at least I've never seen anything in the minutes from the council, is an analytical report like Nikos pointed out. It would be very interesting to find out what kind of success rate you have when you're spending this money. We have spent a lot of money on this, and what is the success rate? I know that anecdotally, I could tell you that when Fernando was doing his work, notwithstanding I wasn't in favor of it, you know, the coyotes would manage our rabbits and gophers to a certain kind of extent. But I am one of those neighbors that live on a slope, that is really concerned about all the gopher, ground squirrel problems on our hill, notwithstanding we have a lot of coyotes still around. So I mean, I just have a question like, how successful is, is the money? And, you know, the education, I think, is very important. I witnessed when Sue Bree Holtz came here and actually complained about the ground squirrels. People don't hear about how they should be contacting Fernando or his replacement. Should they be calling the city? Can they call for ground squirrels? Can they call for, for gophers? As you know, in, in our role as a block captain program, you know, we have a very explicit philosophy in terms of how you educate, you know, the, the neighbors, you know? Maybe a small video on what you should do and not do. And again, anecdotally, I do know a lot of neighbors that feed squirrels because they think they're cute. I'm sure that food also could feed coyotes or any other kind of wild animal, like a raccoon or something else. So where we are, you know, I will attest to what Jim says, I mean, we have, we have a big pack that goes, that has lived in our canyon for years. And we see it traverse up across that goes into George F., you know, I mean, they just go back and forth. So I would, I would argue that their territory is pretty broad, because they're just looking for the food. So, but, but I would be in support of some formal education, some reports to see what, you know, what's your return if you're going to spend the money, which I know you probably are. So to, to see if you can target it to make, make sure that it's effective. And it's not just the coyote management, it's also gopher and ground squirrels, because those are huge problems in our community as well.
Thank you. Mr. Constant, I, I actually think if it's okay, we did give you an opportunity. It's all right. I think we spent enough.
A lot of time.
But unless there's, there's new, new comment?
Actually, almost there. Last, oh, sorry.
Happy New Year, everybody.
You too.
And because it's almost Groundhog Day, I'll say that I feel like I've been here before. I, Nikos, I'm really sorry about what happened. I know that those attacks are incredibly traumatic and I understand your concerns, I really do. And it's also been interesting hearing about the, the pack. Coyotes hunt as a pack, they live as a pack. They, we have ten years, I think, of somewhat scientific information about what the hunting or changing of the balance of nature has done to our community in terms of the new ground squirrel problem. It's been about ten years. I, we, I never saw a ground squirrel anywhere until all this started happening. I'm not saying they're completely related, nature has a way of balancing things. But as we know, the coyotes will, you know, the, the, you, you kill an alpha male, the female will find another alpha male and they will breed together and over, you know, produce more pups. I would like to see the scientific guidelines of the services and I would also like to see a sample of the educational materials that the county has, that they're giving to our residents. And I can also tell you that the, that I used to come in and get a count of how many coyotes Fernando had gotten in his ten years and it was last year, a hundred and seventeen, two of which were eight-pound female and male pups. So, it's very, the, the information's out there if people want to look at it. I don't think we want to look at it, I think we just want to kill the scary coyote. That's me.
Thank you. Do you want to let Nikos talk again or can we wrap it up?
I had a quick question of the, of our representatives. Mr. Wynn and Ms. Bundy, can you tell me, is there anything outside of your services and so forth that could, that could detract from coyotes coming on your property? You read all kinds of things about putting wolf urine around property because you'll smell it and think there's a real wolf out there, you know? But is there anything really prophylactically that one can do to kind of discourage them from going on your property?
For stuff like that, not, not really, since coyotes are pretty intelligent, they'll get used to it over time. For wolf urine or tiger urine, they're not here in Southern California, at least not yet, so they don't know what it is. And then, yeah, there, there are haze, automatic hazing devices out there, like motion detector, sprinkler, light system, noise makers that do work to an extent or you have those predator eyes. But if there's no real threat behind the queue, then the coyotes might get used to that over time. So, so yeah, really, it's just us practicing hazing and possibly a big vicious dog. And then.
Pack that doesn't go very far, though, even a big vicious dog.
Yeah. What we do convey to residents would be sanitation and exclusion measures as well. So, cut, trimming vegetation, removing fruit trees since coyotes, or sorry, the fruits from the fruit trees as coyotes are omnivores, open trash, your, your basic pest mitigation techniques.
Okay, thanks. Nikos, make a chart, come back up?
Yes, I have something I forgot to say. Do you want me to come up there?
Yes.
So, I reported the coyote attack that same day. I called, or I emailed Kristin at the RHCA. She told Karina, and I believe Karina called me either that day or the next day. We discussed it. And then I did get a call from somebody from the county as well. My, I guess my question and, but also my comment is, one of the things that the person from the county said was, hey, it's right before Christmas, I can't really do anything right now. That was kind of a bummer. And then, second of all, but my question is, well, it's been a month, did you put out the traps yet? Because like I said, I reported this immediately.
Mr. Visco?
Hopefully, real fast.
Yes, hopefully, very fast.
Hopefully. Well, I just learned something new. I didn't know the county would come out and trap my gophers and my ground squirrels for me.
Nor did I, as I pay to have it done.
Me too.
So, don't forget, they won't.
Me too. So, I just learned something new, you'll be getting a call from me. So, you know, what I find somewhat interesting is when we're discussing the coyotes, at least in the literature that I've been reviewing, they, they, they talk about pest control. You know, pest, how to control, they're a pest. A gopher is a pest, a squirrel is a pest, ants are, are pests. Some people think, I don't, but some people think the, well, those big birds, you know, those, those things are pests, you know? Peacocks, some people think peacocks are pests, I don't personally. Coyotes aren't pests. They're a predatory wildlife which kills things, including your pets. And if they could have a chance, they'll kill your small children. The other thing is that there's a lot of research been done on this. And once a coyote stops thinking of human beings as a source of danger or fear, but starts thinking of them as a source of food, or even worse, prey, you now have reached the ultimate tipping point. And I, you know, the research is out there, Nikos, I sent it all to Nikos, if you want to, he can communicate it to you. Tims and, and others have done all this research. The other quick issue is, comment is that Torrance is a good program, however, I don't think it goes far enough. I think it has to be a systematic calling to hold down the population. Yes, get rid of the aggressive ones, absolutely, but it has to be a systematic calling. Yes, I know, they're gonna come, come in, but you have to keep it down. I mean. R P D calls peacocks, for God's sake, you know? And, and, but they don't call their coyote issue problem. The other point is that if these were wolves and not coyotes, we wouldn't be having this discussion. You'd be getting rid of them. The only reason people even think about this is because coyotes look like ringed tintin, okay? They look, they look like dogs. If there were wolves, we wouldn't have this discussion.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna close the public comment, I see no other hands going up. Counsel, what's your?
So, we've been through this, as we all know, many times. We've been through the education, coyotes are too smart, the hazing doesn't work, nothing works. Managing the population is helpful. Fernando helped manage the population and he's now gone and it's exploded. We have packs, multiple packs, we have them at my house daily, nightly, as we were just hearing about, this is off-season? No, literally, I'm not joking. Yesterday afternoon and then today also, my wife in the backyard, a coyote, they've lost their fear, yelling and screaming, doesn't take off. The neighbors have little toddlers now, our house and their house. Our dogs and cats, the little ones, cannot be outside, even on our back porch. It's insane. I have to be out there with these stupid little dogs, take them out in the morning, bring them back. We got two big, great dogs, which Fernando recommended, that's helpful, but then you got these great, mean dogs you gotta deal with, that's not so fun. And they bark at everybody and they, you know, they haven't bit anybody, but they scare everybody, you know? Who wants that? So, when the big dogs are out, the little dogs can be with them, but the, the population has grown. And the current, the current management through the county is not acceptable, it's not doing the job. I brought this up because, as we know, Fernando did do a very good job for us. He managed coyote population, he assisted with ground squirrel populations. He showed people how to trap, see, they did the have-a-hearts, he was tremendous. He now has a private company and I would recommend that we hire him. Now, regarding the budget, I, I don't care about the budget, I want to make sure no one gets hurt, number one. And this fifty thousand to the county for education, that's a wasted fifty thousand. So, if we spent the money for Fernando to actually manage the population, help with the ground squirrels, we'd be far better off. Or do both if we have to. If Janus Hahn's gonna, if the county's gonna pay for it, fine, we'll take it. But I think we need to hire Fernando. That's why I brought it up, because I wanted to see about exploring, getting a contract with Fernando. You saw his rates, you also saw that if you have a long-term contract with him, the rates are negotiable. So, we can negotiate a six-month or a twelve-month contract with Fernando, not at those rates. And that's why I brought it up and that's what I want to do.
Okay. Before we have a motion, any other comments from counsel?
I had a question. I, somebody threw a number out just a few minutes ago, about a hundred coyotes were trapped, rude.
Hundred and seventeen, she said.
There's a report that Fernando used to do, it goes to the state, and there were a hundred and seventeen.
All right, did you want to respond?
No, no, what, what I wanted to know was, does, can anybody corroborate that? Was that in Rolling Hills, was that for a specific period of time?
Steph can look into that and follow up and let you know, but at this time, I don't have that information to provide you.
Kristin, you don't have that?
I don't have those details, but I can do the research on it.
My recollection was that it was over a few years, it wasn't like in one.
It was over ten years.
Yeah. I, I remember when that was, whether I heard it from Fernando once when I was dealing with him or saw the report, but there did used to be a report.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would concur with Councilmember Black, there, we're on the other side of the canyon from him and my next-door neighbor on his video, unfortunately, their, their cat was outdoors at night and a pack of coyotes surrounded the cat and, and took the cat and then they all walked off as a single file with the cat. And it was all caught on videotape. So, he was warning me because I have two small dogs. And just this, this week, a few days ago, there was, I do have a small, very small Maltese and she's in one area and unfortunately, the, she damaged the, the screen so it doesn't go all the way down. So, a coyote was stalking her through the, the window and laid his poop right outside the door and my dog, other dog sniffed the door. Could tell the coyote was at the door and then went straight to the poop and followed the sniff to the poop. And so, it, as soon as I blocked that window, she's calmer, she's not like frenetic when I come see her in the morning. So, it is, it is a problem, I hear them screaming outside our house and, and so I have to go out every time, just like Jim says, you know, with two leashes, you know, to, you know, they have to eliminate and I'm putting out, you know, noises outside for music, you know, just to get some noise out there, speaking the whole time to the dog so they know I'm, somebody's there. So, it is, it's, it is very, I mean, I'm constantly looking, making sure that they're not around, but it's, it's a big problem.
Jeff?
Couple things. One, I think, especially if Janus Hahn's paying for it, the education, it's valuable to people to not do stupid things.
Like feeding.
Well, it's legal to feed them.
No, I get it. So, I get that, but I'm saying is, cover your trash cans, do certain things, it's all beneficial, right? For, whether it's for the raccoons or the skunks or whatever that is. We have a raccoon guy who does raccoons and the skunks, we have a gopher guy. And so, we trap everything, because I don't, I don't think we should allow poisoning the gophers, period. We should be trapping the gophers because in our canyon, I got four hawks that live right above and they use our hill, which is riddled with gophers, because we only go so far with the gophers and then we just let it happen down below. I don't want the, the owls, because we have that owl, we have an owl now too. So, we have owls and hawks and I worry that the poison's gonna get to the birds. So, we pay for the guys to come in with the traps, Art, the gopher guy, whoever that guy is, I don't know, we probably spend a couple grand a year on gophers and then we spend a couple grand on raccoons and skunks. So, I don't, I, I think there's, if they're gonna have education, people should be learning how to be smarter about it and what to do. But it is completely out of hand with the coyotes living in our house right now. And it's not just the two. I walked outside yesterday morning, we have, again, ninety-pound dog who's trying to eat the door to get outside to the coyotes. And so, I go out, I'm on the phone, I don't know what the hell I was doing. I walked outside, I'm walking straight to the coyotes and I'm yelling at the coyotes and I'm getting closer and closer, I'm talking on the phone, yelling at the coyotes, talking on the phone, walking closer. And I get, where I get close enough, I realize, what the hell am I doing? The coyotes have not moved at all.
Oh, wow.
And now, I'm standing about twenty feet from them. And they were two, it was, I, then, then finally, they, they, before I ran off, they ran off, so then it was, it worked out fine. But it was definitely.
Don't run off, back away slowly.
So, anyways, I, I, I think, I think that having coyotes, if there was a lot less of them, where they helps with the things, because the rabbits and the whatever, all that stuff gets thinned out by having them. But right now, there's so many of them that I just feel like the population is so much more. And I have no way to prove it or not, except for there's six of them in my yard instead of, it used to be one or two.
Pat, any other?
Every day.
I would like to share one thing and this is for Nam and Elizabeth. I've received a call from a resident who lives on Riada and she has said that, she, she told me that for years, there have been numbers of coyotes living at the barn at Four Poppy Trail, the barn on the undeveloped property. And that, which, that makes sense to me, I mean, it's, there's lots of acres there with nobody around and the barn, it doesn't have any horses or anything in it. And her house, so she's on Riada, so she looks right down on that property and she, after she told me about that, she, I just wanted to let you know about this Four Pop, this Four Poppy Trail. She said, I see and hear them a lot. Then, the very next day, she said, my gardener saw five, five coyotes that appeared to be like nesting, you know, rela, relaxing. They, they weren't hunting at the time, the gardener saw them, but they were there around this barn at Four Poppy Trail. So, I share that with you because that might be very helpful information for you. I have one question to staff and, or I don't know if Elizabeth and Nam might know this, but do private trappers have the same or more or less requirements or restrictions as the county on what they can do? For example, if you have to get permission to trap, from the property owner to trap on their property, let's just use Four Poppy Trail as an example. If you couldn't, would Fernando have to get, or whoever else we hired, would a private trapper have to get that same thing? Or could they mitigate from an adjacent property? That maybe the county, I don't know whether the county can do that or not.
I believe you still need permission.
Sorry, need to come back up.
So, I just want to say that I believe you should, they should be getting permission from the property in order to do any trap work.
What, what about from an, an adjacent?
It would still be the same.
Property, my, the adjacent property says you can trap here on my property. You may or may not trap the animal, but if you could see it, this sounds so gory. Could you do any remediation from an adjacent property with, out, being on that property?
No, my understanding is you cannot shoot over a property, so even if I'm here.
Thank you for saying that, that's what my question.
And there's a property and there's a, if I have a signature here, no signature, and then a signature, you can't shoot across another property. And if you're trapping, you have to be on a property that has signed up. So, even if it's next door, they have to come over to yours to do it, you can't do it on someone who's not coming.
Okay, thank you, all right, thank you, so, all right.
I do have one.
Okay, sure.
I guess it's a question. Up to now, we've been talking about, should we or shouldn't we, about hiring a contractor? But we really haven't talked, you said you didn't care about the budget, but I think we need to talk about that, the scope. If we're, if we're going to agree to this, is this gonna be a multi-stage process? Are we just gonna say, yeah, we're gonna hire somebody and?
We always bring a contract back. So, we direct staff to negotiate a contract with Fernando.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We can give a not-to-exceed number and then he comes back with that, come, come back with that number for us. As long as we're not spending a lot of money on the county, so we're not spending any right now for the county, Janus Hahn.
Right now, we, we already have our budgeted twenty-five thousand and we've spent, I think, what you just saw.
Right now, we already have our budgeted $25,000, and we've spent, I think, what you just saw in that one invoice within the staff report.
So that is coming out of our budget.
That's coming out of our budget.
Well, that 25, and then it's done. We shouldn't do it again.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
On Councilmember Wilson's point, the city's purchasing system does provide you guys some options, and that's what we, as staff, would like some direction. As Councilmember Black mentioned, there is an ability for us to negotiate specifically with Fernando as kind of a sole source. There are required findings, in my opinion. The topic discussed tonight would satisfy those. The other one, of course, is an RFP process, where we would formally, you know, reach out for bids under the auspices of, you know, the lowest responsible bidder. But once again, that's really direction from you all that we're seeking tonight.
So, I'd like to have a motion.
I would make a motion that the staff approach responsible vendors.
Right, so there's kind of two options. Either one, we just reach out specifically to Fernando and try to negotiate the best possible deal, for which point we would bring back to you all.
I'd like to go straight to Fernando, but if that's not fair, and you have to give this riz a person a shot at it, that's okay with me, but I know Fernando knows the city very well.
Why wouldn't we ask both?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Let's ask those responsible vendors to see if they want to submit a proposal for coyote management.
Perfect.
And I don't think, I agree, it shouldn't be limited to just coyote, ground squirrel management, the systems also.
Gophers.
Gophers are too hard. Hold on, they need to be separate, they need to be separate numbers. They need to be coyote-based, because coyote matters. And I can't solve the coyote on my own, right? My only choices are, I can solve the gophers, and I can solve the ground squirrels, I can solve, skunks, I can solve all of that.
So, if I make a motion strictly on commode coyotes, we get a second?
Yes.
Okay. I would ask that we approach responsible vendors regarding negotiating contract for coyote management.
A second.
Do we want to, can I just ask a question for clarification? Do you want to put in, I know you said you don't care about the money, and I can't believe I heard that from you, but.
If it's a tax, you won't care what you spend.
I know. I just, I'm not saying I disagree with you. I just, it's a moment. Do we want to include, we would say for a period of time, like six months, a trial period? Or an amount of money not to exceed, or some type of parameter to give council the direction of what we're looking for?
I think it's six months, so that way we can get some sort of report, and we can find out what happened for the money we've done.
For a time period of six months.
Coyote management plan.
Okay, just for a time period of six months. And we get a bid, we don't have to take it.
Not right now. I mean, if we have to put something together, we'll figure that out there.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'm second to that. Yep.
Call the roll, please.
Sure. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Derringer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper?
Yes.
Mayor Mersch?
Yes.
And can I, I don't want the, I don't want anyone in this, I don't know how we do this, I don't know if this makes any sense, I haven't thought this through until right now, but anyone using the poison to kill the.
Ground squirrels or gophers?
Gophers. Well, anything, because they're going to kill the birds. Anyways, I don't know what the right answer that is, but we should probably think that through.
They're not going to poison the coyotes.
Correct, yeah. So the coyote motion, Christian, you give it.
So, what if you want to gentize the use of bait in the city for a future meeting?
Is that what you're trying to say? Maybe, I don't know.
That's what it's called.
Yeah, no, I get it, but I just, I don't really know, is how, is that a very common way of doing it? I just never.
Well, yeah.
Education. We can, we can bring it up during the matters of, council will like to have a.
Okay, we're good. All right, then, let's keep going.
It depends that they stay in their home.
Well, they don't.
And they die.
Nikos, again, we're very sorry about what happened. I've lost a cat to the coyotes, but I, you know, I understand they live here, too. I feel bad. But thank you for those of you that came on this. Nam and Elizabeth, thank you for coming and your work, and take a look at Four Poppy Trail, if you would.
Just to let you know. I'm tired of walking up there.
Sorry, I didn't mean to open up a whole new thing.
Just to let you know, we respond to the calls that we receive. So a lot of these incidents that the city has talked about before, we never got those calls, just to let you know.
Okay, well, I'll give you another call right now. I don't know, I had three coyotes this morning in the pouring rain. I'm out there trying to, and at first, they did not go away, but I'm out in the rain trying to be even louder than normal, and I thought, they must be coming to my house, because they know I'm having a meet. I'm going to be chairing a meeting on coyotes tonight. And I'm at Four Centring.
Yeah, but can I ask a question? Can you do anything about that? That was, is that officially a threat to a person?
They didn't threaten me. They were.
So then you can't trap them, is that correct?
We have our criteria, so it's.
And is that your criteria? If it was not a threat to a person, can you trap that animal?
That would be not part of the criteria.
The answer is no. Say yes or no. Is it no?
It depends the situation. I would have to investigate first.
If she described not a threat to a person, three coyotes out in the rain.
In the situation, if Mayor Mersch had called staff, we would evaluate her situation. We would provide her with materials that they have provided us with. And if she wanted to have them come out and visit her, we would invite them. That's where we would then refer it to them to come out for education and consultation.
Right, that's not my question.
No, I know it's not.
I don't want all the BS. I want to know, does that fit your criteria, or does it not?
It has to be other stuff, too.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
And the one thing I would share, the reason, but it may not be helpful, but Fernando used to say it helped if they knew traffic patterns. So I wasn't, I wouldn't be asking for anything to happen to those coyotes. I did not feel threatened by them. I can observe that they are far less afraid of humans than they used to be, but I just thought that knowing the traffic canyon, I do live above the traffic pattern above a canyon. Fernando had, I'd heard him say several times that if you report a traffic, the traffic pattern, that can be helpful information, not asking for any service.
On December 21st, I reported an attack.
Madam Mayor, I think we should, we need to move on.
We're in that zone right now. We're not in, to me, I don't feel like we're in the zone of getting bids. We're in the zone of a month ago.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conson. Mr. Conson. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
And I just want to let you, and maybe matters of council, this is related to the coyote thing, maybe we could also investigate whether we have some type of system where online, we could have a reporting system like Torrance, so that individuals who are concerned can self-report, almost like we did or tried to do with the block captains, with the people that wanted to provide services, and there was this way of doing it. We could have some system like that, where people could get information on sightings, you know.
Perhaps you could write something that force be that would clearly explain what type of direction you might like to be giving staff, so we could.
The information we have from Torrance, and obviously the people reporting it, that's all, coyote sightings and incidents, so that it's available to people that are concerned.
So, yeah, so I just want to be sure, the, I know we've kind of preceded this. The motion was made.
Oh, I failed.
And so, I just want to be clear for all five, that is the direction that staff is going. The motion made by Councilmember Black, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
And we're going to facilitate this, correct? It's not going to take months. I mean, I know Fernando's ready to go right now.
Right, okay.
And we have to give the other person a shot at it, we don't know, but that should be available by the next meeting.
Yeah, that direction is clear. It's these, I don't want to say extraneous, I don't mean in a pejorative sense, it's these additional add-ons. We need to be sure that those are not the formal action of the body. We have the direction. Madam Mayor, I encourage you to move on to the next item.
Move on. Yes, I will, I will move on. Okay, thank you. 12A, old business. Update on the City Hall ADA improvement project and Pacific Architecture and Designs request for additional budget to complete responses to plan review comments.
Good evening, again, Mayor and Council. The last time we discussed this item was on June 26th. Staff presented an update on the status of the project, right as it was about to go off to LA County Building and Safety for a plan check. In November, we received word from Pacific Architecture and Engineering, PAE, that Building and Safety had returned the plan review comments requesting ADA upgrades in the parking lot.
Excuse me?
Travel concerns relating from the parking lot down to the sidewalk at Palos Verdes Drive North. Additional structural details and some other minor comments, as you'll see outlaid in the staff report. As a result of these additional requests from LA County Building and Safety, they do require additional design work that is outside of the existing project scope. So therefore, staff has brought this item to you tonight to hear and discuss regarding the additional budget requests. Just a week and a half ago, staff met with June Fujita Hall from PAE and Alan Palermo, our consultant. Both are here tonight to be able to answer any questions. You'll see on page 17 of the staff report, a list of the additional scope of work and the prices broken out for each aspect. I have described those in detail in the staff report. I do want to say, staff, under fiscal impact, did recommend a, that the council approve a not to exceed amount of $8,000 for four of the items. It has come to our attention, just this afternoon, that item number seven revised Title 24 documents. We thought that that was covered completely with some of the Title 24 work that was done as part of the HVAC replacement project. What we learned is that while that work was done, it doesn't cover the additional work that is being, that is necessary to complete the plans for the ADA project. It's good that we have that, but it is not complete, and Alan can speak, Alan or June can speak to that in more detail. With that said, staff is available for questions, and as I said, Alan and June are here to be able to answer more specific questions related to the additional work. If council was to approve the additional funding, this would allow us to complete plan check. And then, as we described back in June, once we had plan check completed, we would be able to go out to bid and get true costs for what, completing the project, if that's so desired by the council, would actually cost.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? Do we have a total of those thus far of what we spent on architects, engineers, and consultants thus far for the bathroom improvement?
So, after your conversation with the city manager today, I tried to get some of that information for you. What I have right now, and I'm just going to say this is an approximate number, but it is not a complete number. So, our finance director, Samario, did tell me he was able to pull up information right now from July 1st of 2021 through September 30th of 2023, and that amount was $106,500. I, the project goes back to 2019.
Right.
So I would anticipate that there will be more, and staff will be able to provide that information, ideally for, you know, by the time your weekly comes out this week.
I appreciate, thank you. And the other question I had was, what is the number now for, as we, as it keeps going up? What is the estimate, or the architects can provide it for, what the cost of the construction would be?
We can ask June to weigh in on that, but I believe the last number that we had provided in a staff report in the past 18 months was around 1.1 million. But that number clearly is a fluid number, yeah.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'll address that. The number was updated in April of this, I'm sorry, Alan Palermo, consultant of the city. Just to see if everyone noticed. Be so sorry. So, yeah, when we went into, when we first went into plan check last year around April 2023, the cost estimate was updated to is about 1.4 million for construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask, what's your experience has been in the approximate rise in costs that generally you're seeing between then and now?
It's, as you are aware, it's been a moving target. Other projects I've been involved, sometimes, believe it or not, some projects are actually coming in at the budget, but they're, I mean, those are up to minute or last minute budget adjustments, just as it goes out to bid. So you just, you just really don't know. It's, how much work is going on right now? How hungry are contractors? You know, the usual suspects.
No, I appreciate the understanding. I do.
I got a question.
Sure.
If we spent in excess of $100,000 for architect, engineering consultations, or consultants, how did we miss this $23,500? Why wasn't that considered as we went through this process?
Some of that was changes after we already had contracts in place with Pacific Architecture.
Okay, some of it.
Some of it, yeah. So, I mean, items one and two were comments directly from the county regarding ADA. When we scoped the project out, we were focusing on the city hall building, not outside the building. The building department came back and said, well, no, because you were expanding the front lobby, we want you to include some work outside the building. Since that time, staff has talked to the county, and we can get those items waived by putting a note on the plan. That was, this is something that just came up in the last week as well. Okay, so that's the ADA. The, then there were a couple items, adding some windows, some structural details. There was a decision to make the offices a little more, not so much user-friendly, but better accommodate the spaces by closing off the vault entrance through the office space. Well, that vault is a concrete wall, 12 inches thick, so closing that off on one end, but opening it up access to another turned into some additional costs. And now the county, you know, wants, the building department wants to see some additional detailing and structural on that, to do that work. So that was something that was not part of the original option layout, was something that was added after the fact.
And the plan sat with the county for six months, is that right?
It shocked us, because the first plan check went pretty quick, and we were actually surprised that we got comments back in about a month's time. And then it was resubmitted at the end of May, and at the end of July, we only heard that it was in the queue to be reviewed, and it took them, it's almost like the first go-around, and I can't explain why, they, the plans were submitted, but it wasn't routed to all the different departments. Then when it went back around the second time, it finally got routed to the various departments, Building Safety, ADA, Health Department, Fire Department. So we started getting some additional comments. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, June?
Yeah, I should add that there was.
Excuse me, June.
Oh, I'm June.
Your last name.
I should add, oh, June Fujita Hall with Pacific Architecture and Engineering.
Thank you.
I should add that there was a lot of confusion with the address tied to the, all of the other property information that LA County has. They would confuse this project with another project. They would approve a plan and then unapprove it. It was really unbelievable process. There was a lot of confusion between the different departments. They couldn't figure out our payment. They told us we paid when we didn't pay the fees for LA County. So, yeah, the different departments are organized differently, and there was a lot of confusion on their end.
Is this the local, the Lamita office?
It's different offices, depending on which plan check it is. So we had fire plan check, mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, plumbing plan check. We had building and safety, so there's, and health also. So there's different departments, and each of them operate differently, and each of them handle the fees differently. Some accept this, you know, the city's contract with LA County, some did not.
And to that example, so Building and Safety, they, because of the contract that they have with the city, they waived all plan check fees. So the city didn't have to pay plan check fees. However, Health Department and Fire Department do not waive the fees. So there were, I think, $400 and the $600 fees that have to be paid to those departments.
And then, you know, they sent us approval for one of the plan checks, and then reenaged it a couple months later. They said, we're going to redo it. And they re-entered it into their system. I've never actually seen that before in 25 years, but that's what they did.
Can I ask a question? Fire already, they signed off on it or did not? Are we going to have to sprinkle the building? We will have to sprinkle it. So we have to replumb and sprinkle the whole building? For a bathroom?
Well, it started.
Without a bathroom, we got a little carried away when we said, oh, we're going to push the wall out here, we're going to do that.
It's a beautiful plan.
And then, you know, we pulled back on a little bit. We were, we have not been efficient on this. we have not been efficient on this, judging by the fact of how long it's gone on and how many changes that there have been.
And the realities are, we have wire on the floor with tape. And there's a long list of, it can't, it can't be. It's, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions?
I have a specific question regarding item six, and that's the revised, the mechanical drawings for the, based on the replacement of the HVAC. There was a option that was posed, instead of revising the mechanical drawings to provide the as-built drawings for the HVAC along with the project plans, and here's the as-built plans, and they just have to incorporate them together. Is that a problem?
There, there's certainly some risk associated with that. June and I discussed that with, with staff and said, you know, the simple way is, okay, here's the as-built, here's the approved set of plans that Pacific Architecture prepared. Oh, by the way, we had this other work that was, an emergency work had to be done at the same time. Here's the as-built for the mechanicals. So you really need to look at both sets of plans in order, when you're putting your construction bid together. So, you know, so that would be the simple way, low cost, you're, we're providing all the information. Now, the concern is, okay, what if something that needed to be done was kind of overlooked and isn't covered in both the plans? And they try and consolidate, then, as you know, contractors live off change orders. So they could, they would be making the case, oh, well, you know, one plan's a business unless, yes, we had them both, but there's a conflict, so that conflict is going to cost you X. So the, the risk is, there is a risk to a contractor change order if something wasn't, if they didn't see something right or they question it. It's, yeah.
I mean, I mean, if it's on the plans and they weren't considering it, yeah.
No matter how great the plans are, the plans will not cover everything. And no matter, we could spend $500,000 on the plans, and the contractors would be like, well, there's no detail on this, or this doesn't work right. There's going to be change orders, no matter what we do. You try to minimize them as best you can, but that's the reality of what this is going to be. And this building is so old, they're going to find crazy stuff in the walls when they start ripping it apart.
That is why my house is falling around, down around me, because I can't deal with all this. Pat, any questions? Open it for public comment. Oh, oh, thank, thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to share with us?
Is there anything we can do to taper any of this down?
I think we're just going for $11,500.
Yeah, yeah. I think they've already done the taper.
$8,000.
Look to me like we're not going to have to do a different pathway to the, to the light, or are we? It looked like that's not, that's going to be waived, or is it not going to be waived? ADA, because that's too steep, I'm sure, for an ADA compliance.
Right. So right now, the plans, correct, how wrong did they show kind of a path from the building? That we're doing the path out front just to the edge of the parking lot, correct? That's what I recall. And that's where it stops. What, what the county commented on was, okay, we want to see, and this is something we talked to city staff, that we can handle easily without the plans. We can get somebody in here and do, restripe the handicap parking space.
Right.
Put some signs up now, no big deal. We don't need to do a plan for that. The other part of it is access to the public right-of-way.
Right.
We know that will be a challenge, because you're right, it is very steep out there, that will never comply. So that's something that has.
But that has not been waived.
That, no, that's been waived.
It has. Okay, I want, that's good news.
Yeah.
Because that would be a big deal.
And if I may, staff does plan to look at that, not right now. So if we do, we'll always come back to city council to have that discussion.
And look at what?
At the pathway connecting to the public right-of-way and address.
So you want to change the path?
If we, if it comes back, we wouldn't do it at this very moment. We would come back and have a discussion with you, if that's something we want to address.
We don't.
I mean, I imagine the future solution would be some sort of ramp, zigzagging through here somehow.
Right, you'd have to re, you'd have to regrade from the gate down to the traffic light. You have to change all of our trails and our new fencing and everything. It's not something we want to do.
No.
Well, again, that's, that's been, that part's being waived for this.
For now. Question?
No, I was going to make a motion, but.
Okay, what? Okay, so thank, thank you for that. Please stay with us for a while, in case we have anything. You can take your seats, but in case we have any questions that come from the, the public, I'd like to open it up. Do we have any public comment on this item? Ah, hearing none, close.
I make a motion, we approve $11,500 as a number not to exceed.
Or numbers three, five, seven, and eight?
Whatever Christian wanted. Three, four, if you want, four.
Oh, sorry, three, four.
Three, four, five, seven, and eight.
Wait, then that would be more than that. Okay, three, four, five, seven, three, four, five, and eight. Did you say seven as well?
Yeah, seven, seven is the one. So 8,000 was the recommended amount without number seven, so.
And three and a half is seven.
Which is 11,500.
That's 11,500. So, three, okay, three, four, five, seven, and eight. Does that agree with what everybody?
That's, if they're saying, yeah, they, we have to do the Title 24, because the other ones were recommended by staff. Yeah, that's what it comes to.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second?
I didn't hear it a second.
Oh. Is any, so, so before we take the vote, is any more discussion on this? It looks like we might.
It's not going to go.
No more discussion? Okay, take a vote, please.
Sure. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
No.
Councilmember Derringer.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Piper. Yes. And Mayor Mersch.
Can I ask a question in the middle of a vote? Poor, feeble mind. What is the result if we didn't do this, if we didn't approve it?
We have to.
We either go forward with what we're doing.
Right, I'm just, I'm just.
Or we throw it all away.
Got it, okay.
And we change the bathrooms to, to multi-gender.
And forget everything else and.
Leave the tape. Leave the tape on the.
All gender.
Right, right. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Approval, and we wouldn't be able to get a building permit.
Right, okay, that, that was what I thought. I, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I will vote yes.
Pass this forward. Yeah, follow on, follow on.
All right, item 12B.
Hi, thank you for coming.
Miss again for fun sometime. Approved, approved potential 25% local match requirement amount of approximately $405,250 for a recently submitted application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to address fire fuel abatement in Rolling Hills Klondike Canyon. And for purposes of this discussion, I'm going to call this Klondike Project Two, so that there's no confusion, because as you read this, the staff report, it could talk about Klondike, 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 and it's kind of confusing whether it's one or two, so I'd like to call this Klondike Two.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This item we brought before you back in August, shortly after we had submitted the sub-application for, as Mayor Mersch just called it, Klondike Canyon Two Vegetation Management. The first vegetation management FEMA project that you have is, is in the Paintbrush Canyon area. So, and I'm sorry I didn't spell that out in the report. That, the reason why in August you tabled this item was to see if we could come back with some more information on a status update related to the Paintbrush Canyon FEMA Vegetation Management Grant. As Councilmember Black expressed concern during that meeting, we haven't pulled any weeds on the first project. And so unfortunately, I am here to give you the same update that we had back then, with maybe one ounce more of information, as is noted in the staff report. At that time, Phase One has now been completed for almost two years. And that, that's the environmental. These, these particular vegetation management projects are broken into two phases automatically. Phase One is an environmental evaluation. That had, that was completed back in 2022, February of 2022. And we have been waiting for FEMA to complete their environmental assessment as to whether or not it complies and can move forward into the Phase Two. As I mentioned the last time, FEMA was out here almost a year ago in late February, early March. They did a walkthrough of properties with Cal OES and our consultants. We did not hear any further word after that meeting, after you tabled the item, reached out to Cal OES trying to gain further information. None was forthcoming. In November, we finally got a, an email from FEMA requesting a meeting. And so FEMA representatives, city staff, and Cal OES was on a call, answering, and our consultants answering specific questions from FEMA, so that ideally, I guess, they can finalize their evaluation. Since November, we have not heard anything else, and so I cannot provide you with more substantive information as to whether Phase One will be approved and we can move to Phase Two, and then provide even a timeline if that was to happen, as to when we would finish the project. With that said, and based on the concerns expressed in August, at that time, interim city manager and myself, you know, told you that we would want to bring this back right around this timeframe, because Cal OES will be completing their evaluation of the sub-application before they send it to FEMA for their evaluation. And we did not feel at that time, and I think the new city manager and myself still concur, that it would not be a good idea to have this move forward to the FEMA evaluation part if we were going to eventually decide to back out. So really bringing this to you for, it's really an either-or situation here. The one is either, as the staff report states, to, to approve what our 25% match would be, which in this case is $405,000, $405,250. That would be spread over three successive years of a project. So that would be 135,083 each year. Or if there is no appetite to go through the same type of process at this time, until you can see that there were some success in results with the existing grant, that we, we stop forward movement. Staff is also included in there, our cost to date. So we spent a total of $30,430 between the notice of intent and the sub-application process. What I would say, that money is reimbursable under Phase One of a grant if we were to be awarded it. If we were to back out now, then clearly that would have been an investment that we made that we would not be able to use, and that would not be a reimbursable amount. What I would say is, in the event that the existing grant is moved forward to Phase Two and is eventually completed, and the city is successful with this, the city could apply for a similar grant like this, using the work that we've already done with probably some modifications in the future. But these monies here that we've expended thus far would, I do not think, be reimbursable at that time. So at this point, really, it is up to the council to make a decision. Do we want to continue forward? And if so, would the council approve the 25% match? In the event that this is, this comes back as an approved grant from FEMA? Or does the council want to take a pause and stop the sub-application process at this time? I'm open for questions, and that kind of includes my report.
Questions from council?
I've got one. So does anybody know if this AB 11554 was enacted, if we would be able to avoid the environmental review?
So that was the first, when Mr. Visco brought that up earlier tonight, that's the first time I've heard of it, and I made a note to go do some research on that. I don't know if there's retroactivity built into that. I will say.
Well, it's not even passed yet, so.
Yeah, I, I will say that, you know, these, these FEMA grants that require this amount of environmental study, it's challenging. It's, it's an enormous amount of staff time, not only for us, but for Cal OES, for our consultants, for, for FEMA, clearly. So I don't know.
FEMA is a federal agency.
Correct, and, and so.
What would require the environmental study is California, right?
Right, but, but the evaluation between Cal OES and FEMA has to consider any of the California environmental. I mean, we are basically held to the, to California environmental standards for any projects we do here. So I, I can't speak to it now, but I, I definitely made a note to, to do some research on that.
Right, thank you.
And was it AB or SB?
I had, I had AB, AB 1554.
Yeah, I think with that numbering system, it would be AB, okay.
And I have a question. And what do harm in terms of, you mentioned in your staff report that Cal OES is going through their review through January, it's almost the end of January now. But if it goes to FEMA, given how long FEMA takes to do things, I mean, they may not make a decision for months and months. In fact, it basically, you kind of opined that it might not be early some, till early summer that we receive information.
Correct.
I would assume before then, we would be hearing something about the existing grant in terms of Phase Two. But is there any harm in, I mean, if it goes to FEMA and they don't provide us with something, we could pull it back at that point? Is that, what's, what's the damage if we do it?
I think the concern that interim city manager Reddy and myself had was that if we moved on to the FEMA stage, because Cal OES has done an enormous amount of vetting in this project. As a matter of fact, MNS engineers who helped prepare the grant were surprised and shocked at how long after we had submitted the sub-application, how many more change requests from Cal OES we had over the course of August, September, and October for them to answer. So there was, they said they had never experienced the level of rigidity with, you know, the, the requests for information that were coming. So is it possible that, that Cal OES does a, a more expansive evaluation than FEMA? I, I don't know. I think the concern was that if we got to the FEMA stage and then we pulled back, that it could hurt our chances when, when and if the city decided to apply for another FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That's all. And, and it's, I don't think that we have any conclusive evidence that would show that that could happen, but I think we're trying to potentially avoid that if possible, because, you know, this community will remain, you know, in a high-fire severity zone, you know, for as long as we're all here.
Any other questions from staff? I mean, from council? Hearing none, open to public comment. Mr. Visco?
Thank you. Yeah, Alfred Visco, 15th century. Well, I don't think, I personally don't see this going, letting them go forward, letting Cal OES and FEMA, you know, let them do their thing. You're not going to, you probably won't hear back from them until next year, until 2025. So I, and I don't think that if, if you do hear back from them, you later decide you don't want to go forward with this project, I don't think it's going to hurt you in the future. It's just the way it is, okay? It's my own personal opinion, it's my own personal dealings with these various agencies and other situations. This is what they do. This is why they exist, is to process these grant, grant requests. I mean, if they got all upset at you in the future for, because you didn't decide, you didn't like the deal when it was presented to you at that time, and you backed out, that's not going to, in my humble opinion, the odds of that happening are almost zero, okay? So I agree with Dr. Black, this is really frustrating, that we spent all the money that we did spend on the first grant, and we still haven't whacked the weed. It just drives me crazy. But quite frankly, what are, what are, what is our alternative? If we don't go forward seeking this grant money to take care of the project, Klondike project, which we'll call it, what are you going to do? You're going to forget about it? You're going, you're going, you're going, you're going to do it all yourself, come up with all the money to do it without the grant money? You're still going to have to do the, you know, your city, you're still going to have to do secret stuff, still going to have to do all that environmental stuff anyway. So I, you know, I, personally, I don't know what your option, I don't know what your, what your option is. I, I don't like FEMA grant, having to deal with FEMA at all. If you can avoid dealing with FEMA, that would, FEMA, that would be great. But you, you don't have an option. You didn't, you didn't. You didn't, you didn't do the Fire Safe Councils, you know, I've been talking to you about this for years. Nobody wanted to put it together, it's too much work, it's too much this, it's too much that, it's too hard. Well, here you are. If you'd done what I asked you to do three years ago and formed a Fire Safe Council, you'd have Cal Fire Grants money, which is non-matching money. And you can use the Cal Fire Grant money as part of your matching money with the, with the federal money. I pointed all that out, it's all in my letters, it's all in my testimony of hearing. Everybody said, oh, no, 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 no. So you want this route? That's fine.
Thank you.
There you go.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll close that portion. Wishes of the council?
I'm not interested in throwing good money after bad.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm getting very discouraged about this grant process. It's just taking too long and, you know, Mr. Visco asked, what, what are we going to do? I think we could take the $400,000 and probably just do it ourselves.
Do the whole project.
As good as, I can do it sooner. I'm not saying we should do that now, but, you know, that, that's an alternative rather than waiting on the state, federal government.
Babe?
Well, I think it would be helpful, it does sound like we've asked Cal OES what, what their take on it is. I mean, just say, look, we're, we're still waiting and it's been two years, this is kind of difficult, we're a small city, we don't have unlimited funds. Do you have any suggestion? We're thinking of just holding off and waiting to see what's going to happen. Are they going to give us the money for the Phase Two before we push forward on this other grant? And, and just asking them, we're just trying to figure out our options here as a small city and ask for their suggestions and include them as a partner in the process. At least they know we are, we're stewing around with this, this issue.
Thank you. Jeff?
When is the drop dead date?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you.
The drop dead date for?
Saying anything.
So there, there is no, as you see in the staff report, right? What we're saying is the calendar that was presented to us, which is a loose calendar, was that Cal OES would review it until roughly around the end of January and then would send it to FEMA and that their evaluation process would take six months into the summer.
How long? So you're, that could take forever, who knows? Is there a reason we have to do this today?
No, no, the direction was to bring it back when we had some more information, but we had expressed at that point these same concerns, right? That we.
What is there, what's the downside of just keep tabling this thing?
You could, there, there is no downside, right?
Why don't we keep tabling it until we are forced to make a decision? And my feeling is, one, we don't want to do it on our own because we have to pay prevailing wages and whatever and 400 grand, it's not going to go very far. But we could do some sort of crazy matching system with the residents who own parts, oh anyways, parts of it. I mean, I feel like we got more bang for our buck out of.
Me.
The, yeah, well, Pat could finally do something and then.
[laughing]
But like the Land Conservancy, we got a decent bang for our buck out of them.
So you just think that $250,000 we've sent so far to get zero weeds whacked and zero.
No, I'm saying.
You don't think that's a good value?
I'm saying is, we should push this off as long as we can until we actually get cornered. And then when we get cornered, we have better information at that moment.
We know information, we know we spent $250,000.
But are we spending any money now?
One single weed pole.
How much money are we spending on the way between now and three months from now?
We're not spending any more money on the existing Paintbrush Canyon vegetation management.
Okay, how much money, I'm saying is, how long, can we wait on, we're not spending any money, so we just wait until that happens or doesn't?
We're not spending the money and I think, you know, from a budgetary perspective, before we go into the budget season, staff would probably want to know if there was a desire from the council to set aside $135,000 for a Phase One that could potentially be approved sometime during fiscal year 24, 25. So I, I think, you know, we're trying to get ahead of that as opposed to having a conversation in the middle of the budget season or coming back and asking you for a, you know, a movement of money from the general fund reserves. So, but there, listen, at the end of the day, to, to the point that you were making, you know, yes, could, could we wait? Sure, you know, but I think we're, we're really trying to juggle a variety of different aspects here and, and this really ultimately comes down to what are the wishes of council?
We've already, we've already spent the money that we spent on this.
We did.
There's no more money to spend at this moment.
Correct.
So why aren't we just kicking this thing down the road as far as it'll, so far as we go? And then when we get cornered, we'll make that decision at that point in time. Whether we make the budget decision soon or we don't make the budget decision, the good part is, we pay this out over three years, which is a much more.
Digestible.
Digestible, thank you, good word. Digestible number to worry about what it is, but right now, when we talk budget, then we know, hey, there's a possibility there's a hundred and something thousand dollars hanging out there. And we get 30 of it back, I don't know if the 30 is front loaded or back loaded or how they do that, but I, to me, to shoot it down completely at this moment without what's next is, seems like not the best move from my standpoint. I'd rather do is leave it alone and then talk about what would we do and what would it look like to deal with this area if we don't do this? Are we going to hammer the residents that live there and make them do it? Are we gonna, like, I don't know what the, I don't know what the right answer is.
My opinion is we've actually seen, we do have data.
Yeah.
We've had how many years? How many hundreds of hours of staff time? $250,000 spent in addition to that and zero, zero work done, zero.
Yeah, but we're not, that's, that's for the other project.
This will be the exact same. Why would you be different? It's going to have to go through all the same projects.
But we're not agreeing to pay anything right now, we're just kicking the can down the road.
But I mean, he, he seemed to think we're going to have a different outcome as far as efficiency and the timing and the money spent.
At some point, hold on.
It's going to be the same, worse.
It's going to be completely inefficient.
Right.
The numbers aren't going to change, it's just going to be, when do we start paying them, right? Why, it, yes, it'd be nice if they actually had done something on the other one, but they are going to do it at some point in time. And them doing it at some point in time is still better than nothing have happened. When you guys worked so hard on coming up with some like, pretty, I didn't think that aggressive of plans on how to get the canyons cleared and like, you guys came up with some stuff that was pretty reasonable and people lost their minds in here. This is FEMA money, it's free, it's the fire department doing it, it's, right? It's, and no one shows up and complains about this. So to me, is if we can't get our community, who some people are told, my neighbor across has done a great job across from me, and now it's all growing back with weeds. So I just look at this as, yes, it's going to take forever, but if we can get that whole chunk cleared out, even if it's in five years from now, and then over the next 30 years it grows back in and we deal with it, whatever. I just think, I just think that the 25 cents on the dollar is worthwhile, it's unfortunate, it's with government, and it takes forever. And it's with federal government, it's even worse, it's the worst possible thing. I just think the irritation of them is just what it is. And so if they, if they conquer this in 2026, we're going to be like this, thank God.
And I appreciate all the discussions gone on about kicking the can down the road and, you know, maybe we shouldn't just cut it off right now. And I am, I think as everybody knows, am very motivated to try and do whatever we can to mitigate the vegetation in the canyons. That being said, I don't like this plan. When you look at the plan, they want to, and I know that native plants are better than non-native plants, I get it. They want to plant 9,000 native plants after they do the mitigation and take out vegetation. And I understand their purpose of doing that is if the natives grow, it will stop the growth of non-natives. But even natives need to be maintained. I don't need 9,000 more plants in, in that canyon, at least from my perspective. That's, that, that to me is not a good solution. And if we did something on our own, maybe we could take a look at that. But maybe it doesn't have to be 9,000, maybe there's some point in there. But I don't like this particular plan. It raised issues to me. I don't remember whether they were doing that same thing in Klondike One, which is really Paintbrush, but if there was that same requirement in that plan, I mean, no wonder this stuff is so expensive. The reseeding of this area was like 800, $700,000 of the cost of this plan. So I am not inclined to approve this plan and spend any more money on it.
May, may I?
Please.
So my understanding is, one, between the time when you applied for that first grant and this one, a variety of parameters and requirements have changed, especially from the environmental perspective. So a lot of the planting of the natives also has to do with preventing soil erosion.
Yeah.
And so, you know, having root systems, you know, take hold and, and hopefully protect the hillsides. I don't know that, to your point, I don't know what the natives being recommended are and whether they are meant to grow larger if they are just, you know, smaller or whatnot, but, but everything that's recommended in there was meant to try to hit on the key points of what they're looking for.
I understand, I understand all the purpose, but if we, when our original plans that we were trying to develop of what we would do, it didn't require a lot of reseeding and mitigation because we weren't asking for stuff to be cleared. We were asking it to be limbed up, mosaic, crown reduction. We were including in the plans that we were recommending a softer approach that did not clear. Remember, we were going to put a dollar in the jar every time we used the word clear? So I think there are just other, other ways around it.
And I think you're right, like our canyon management videos talk exactly about what you, you are for, for private homeowners to be able to do those clearance issues and shaping of their properties. And I think, you know, most likely because this has an environmental aspect, it has far broader parameters, say, than what we would do in that situation.
And I, and I understand why they did it. And again, that's the problem, that's the price you pay of having the government do something for you.
May I answer council member Derringer's?
Certainly.
Questions from earlier? So to the, to the question of, you know, could we ask Cal OES and get some answers from them? We, we have tried that. Our biggest issue right now too is there has been an enormous amount of turnover just in the two years I've been here. I've dealt now with four different Cal OES representatives. So our newest one just started in, I want to say, early December, and he's taken over all three of my current FEMA grants, so the two undergrounding and, and the vegetation management. They, my, my previous person did her best to try to get me answers, but I, you know, all I can say is from my perspective, there seems to be an enormous black hole in communication between the state and FEMA and getting answers is never as easy as one would hope it would be. You would think that they would be a conduit for maybe getting us some more information, but it has really, it has not shown itself to be that way. So just so you're aware, that is my.
And I don't think it's, they perceive their job as being, you know, you're talking about having them be a working partner with us. I don't think they're perceiving their, their position as being a working partner.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying that, but that was just to explore.
I understand.
Depends on the personnel, I agree.
I understand, okay. I would like a motion.
I make a motion, we kick this thing down the road as far as we can go.
Second.
Babe, would you take roll call, please?
I don't want to make a specific date.
Well, we don't know what the date is because we don't know when it becomes a problem. Once it becomes a problem, we need to bring it back and either we'll see motion or we won't.
A friendly three, three months? I mean, put some type of.
Let's do six months then.
Yeah, I want six months.
Okay.
Three years.
Okay.
Six months?
Would you accept a friend, a friendly motion, six months?
I would accept a six months shortest recap in the world.
Or, or if they, if you present itself, come.
If something happens, we'll come back soon.
Right, whichever is sooner, got it.
All right.
So it's six months.
I understand.
Friendly amendment, her.
Six months?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Lots of roll call votes tonight. Council member Wilson. Yes, oh, sorry, council member Black.
No.
Council member Derringer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper?
Yes.
And Mayor Mersch.
No.
Okay.
See you in six months.
Such a divided council.
Thank you, everybody, on that one. New business.
All right, 13A. 13A. Approved second amendment.
To the memorandum of understanding between the four peninsula cities and the Palos Verdes Peninsula Unified School District to continue cost sharing to schools, to school resource officers for three years expiring on August 26, 2026.
Madam Mayor, just a brief report on this. The city entered into this contract in 2019 for a one-year contract. In 2020, they came back with amendment number one to extend the contract for three years. The city has been paying its fiscal obligation of $3,000, which was determined by a formula looking at the population, but also the student ratio attending the schools. Now amendment number one has expired, December 2023, and they're coming back and saying, we would like to have amendment number two extending the contract for an additional three years expiring August of 2026. The fiscal obligation remains as $3,000 and there are some amended language that was amended in the previous language, the previous agreement that continues on. So at this time, Madam Mayor, staff is seeking direction from city council to agree and approve amendment number two entering into a three-year contract with the same fiscal obligation of $3,000 with P D P O C, P D P O S D district, I should say. And this is going to be a posture with the three other agencies.
Any questions from council? I have a quick one. Do we get any reports at all from the school district on what activities take place, the use of the resources?
At the regional law?
Thank you, that's one of the reasons I let, want to go. Okay, thank you for answering that. Any other questions? Hearing none, open the item for public comment. Hearing none, close, to have a motion.
I'd make a motion if you believe this is simple.
I'll second it.
Favor?
I.
Opposed? Passes, thank you. 13.
14.
I'm sorry, oh, 13A was it? So now we're going to 14. And we already took care of 14B, consideration of drafting a resolution and/or sending a letter in opposition to the 2024 State Ballot Measure Initiative, number 210042A1, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is brought, was a referral from council member Derringer regarding the potential of sending a letter in opposition to this State Ballot Measure Initiative, which is sponsored by the California Business Roundtable. Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act would amend the California Constitution with provisions that limit voters' authority and input, adopt new and stricter rules for raising taxes and fees, and may make it more difficult to impose fines and penalties for violation of state and local laws. Most of the information in the staff report has been provided by the League of California Cities. And so I'll just point out a few highlights in the report for your consideration on this item tonight. One being that any taxes and fees that were adopted after January 1st, 2022, that do not comply with the new rules are found void unless reenacted. The concern here clearly speaks to local control and the fees and taxes that could potentially affect the city of Rolling Hills would be things like property development application, processing and related fees, construction and demolition fees, plan reviews, building permit fees, code enforcement or abatement related fees, purchase rental and/or lease of government property, charges imposed as a condition of property development, and also Prop 218 fees. So if, you know, when Republic raises their rates each year, if you are to do a Prop 18 hearing like we did last year and to keep your rates in accordance with theirs, that, that could potentially be affected. If you were to create a special district, say hypothetically related to other issues within the city, maybe, you know, stormwater. stormwater systems or whatnot, you know, those are the types of examples of things that could potentially have an issue. So the report lays out the areas of concern that affect the city of Rolling Hills. And at this point, and unless Councilmember Derringer would like to speak more from her perspective as the president of the LA Division, staff concludes our report and awaits any questions that we may be able to answer.
Bee?
I just, you know, real quickly, for a small city as ours, I mean, the costs to do this type of thing, if this thing were to pass, would really swamp our budget because everything would have to be put onto an election. We have costs for an election. And then it's not just that somebody can sue you. And even if you have reasonable costs and it's not, it's under actual costs, which is what we have, people could sue you. And then our staff would have to tabulate and nickel and dime how much it costs for every single fee we have. It's ridiculous. This is, this is a horrible plan. And it's basically taking, you know, money away from corporations. And they devised this under, like it's supposed to benefit taxpayers, but it's really going to hurt them because fees for services are going to be affected if the city doesn't have the money to provide them because of all of the costs of implementing something like this. So I think we should really have against that. It's going to really drastically affect us.
You just said fees for corporations. What about this is for corporations?
No, well, I mean, it's corporate monies that are being put for this particular.
No, but why, I don't see anything about corporations in this. Is there something I'm missing?
They, there was something along there. I'm trying to remember where it was that the corporate businesses were being, there was a diversion of monies, as I recall, from that. I don't think it's being treated in this thing.
So it looked to me, I want to make sure I'm accurate in my reading. It looked to me, this was just not allowing cities or government entities to raise fees, which are another word for taxes, unless people vote for it. Is that correct?
It is, well, and it's not just taxes. It's anything that's a fee.
Fee, that's what I said.
Yeah. That they're now putting under the word for tax. But it's not just that. As I mentioned, anybody can sue the city and say, I don't believe these fees are appropriate or the tax is appropriate. And then the city would have to, the staff, calculate that and actually prove it in some kind of litigation to justify this. And it's, and everything would have to, then we'd have to have an election for everything to put it on. Where they, they come to us and they tell us about information. We have all of this in a public forum. We do all of that. Everyone's involved. But this is, this is going beyond that. It has to be by, and the standard is clear and convincing evidence, which is between beyond a reasonable doubt and, just below beyond a reasonable doubt and just above preponderance of the evidence. So it's a higher standard of proof that you have to prove that it, that everything you do, every fee, is reasonable. If somebody challenges, anybody can challenge.
And that's why the league is opposed to it? Because it makes it more difficult to enact or raise fees? Is that it?
Well, that's not just one thing, but it adds cost to cities. And if cities can't provide a service because they can't be able to have fees associated with a service, then it's the public that's going to suffer because they're not.
Well, unless the public votes for it. Is that correct?
Well, but you can't schedule an election overnight. And so in the meantime, fees for services are suffering. They're not, they're not funding that. They can't fund it. Everything is got to halt. And things that they have already approved, all of a sudden, are now stricken off the record from this, from years before. So it's going to stop immediately. So this is, this is, this is a big problem. And so.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So who would benefit from this?
Well, the people who are proposing it, and I'm trying to remember, there was a whole group of them. I was, this came out a while ago.
Oh, man. Councilwoman Derringer, I have that. Those who support it are the California Business Roundtable, California Business Association, Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. The those who are neutral are the South Bay Cog. And opposition is League of California Cities and the Cal State Association of Counties.
So somebody.
What? I'm sorry.
The Cal State Association of Counties.
Of counties?
Yes.
Those are all tax, taxing entities.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know, this is the first I've heard of it. So I don't, I don't have deep knowledge of it. But, you know, if you look at Prop 13, most taxable agencies are opposed to that because it limits their tax collecting ability. But most homeowners are for it. So it's just, it's just a little odd to me that there's a big outcry to, well, somebody spent a lot of time and money and probably benefited from it by putting this on the ballot. So, you know, there's, there's some, there's stakes in this. There's stakes from either side. And I just, I question who's going to benefit from this? I see, I see how it would detriment our city, but would it benefit our residents? You know, that's kind of a, you know, something to consider. So I don't really have deep enough knowledge of this to make a decision.
Well, I mean, let's put it this way. So our residents receive services from the state and from the county, and all of them are going to be affected by this, too. So we're going to have a diminution.
It does say could, I believe.
No, it is affecting the county and it's affecting the state, all of this, and as well as local government. So then you're going to have a situation where their services are going to be affected simply because now it has to have an election. They're going to have to pay for the election. We have to have fees to put everything on as an election instead of just having them come here and provide their opinion so we can listen and consider it, which is part of due process. But to have to put everything, elections don't come every single week.
We understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, any questions?
No.
I have a question for our city attorney, and I don't mean to put you in an awkward situation because in case it may be different, but I'm going to put you. Does BBK have a position on this? Has it taken anything and with any information to other cities or guidance on this issue?
So the short answer to your question is no. The longer answer is our law firm would probably never take a formal position one way or the other. We represent a variety of jurisdictions who.
But just of the, just of the merits of this, no, nothing one way or.
So, I mean, it is safe to say that this will, I don't want to say impose, but require cities to do a lot more things in order to raise revenue in the form of fees? I think that's, that's, that's safe to say, yes, that is a fair statement.
And how is that a bad thing?
That's not for me to, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I was just asking if they had taken a position.
Usually if I didn't read anything and it says Howard Jarvis is for it, then I usually say, all right, we'll vote yes on that, no matter what, without even reading the thing.
Okay. So for that insight, after that insight.
Public comment, public comment.
After that insight, I would like to open it up for public comment. If you're making a public comment, okay. Hearing no other words of wisdom, I'm going to close public comment. I, what are the?
I make a motion. We don't do anything.
Well, if one more information.
Any discussion before we make the motion?
No. No, I just, I make a motion. We don't do anything on this and we move on.
I second.
So you're taking a neutral position or you're just not taking any action?
We're not doing anything. We're not going to write a letter. We're not, it's not going to do anything anyway, so we're going to not do it.
I'm not really here to tell the people how to vote. I find this very confusing. If I can't figure it out, I'm not ready to say one way or the other to other people. And to try and be in the position of saying, I think I know what's best when I don't know what everybody thinks is best for them. And when things get too difficult, when I read issues on the ballot that are too difficult to understand, and there's a lot in here that's very difficult to understand.
I think Pat had some words of wisdom earlier. I agree.
There's a first and second.
It's not a rare occasion. It happens all the time, Pat.
So there's a motion.
Motion and second.
I second it. Well, I mean, if you want some further information, I did think that there had been a lot of information in there, but.
There's a lot of information in there. We have a first and a second.
You're the one, you're mayor, so you say, let's vote.
I cough the vote.
For a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. That's all we.
My mantra tonight.
That's all we need.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Black. Councilmember Derringer.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
Yes.
And Mayor Mersch.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Bee, for bringing it to our attention. 14B.
Here's 14C now.
Thank you. I need all the help I can get. Consider and approve the updated City Council Committee assignments for 2024.
Did you want staff to?
Well.
Sorry, this.
No. If you'd like me to read it, I would be delighted to read it.
I'm happy to make an introduction, but.
I'm good with this. I'm a big girl. I can do this. I can't control the meeting, but I can do this. I can read. The City Council reorganizes annually in December. The new mayor reviews the City Council Committee assignments and adjusts accordingly. The updated City Council assignments by moi are attached for consideration and approval. Under the official commissions, boards category, the assignments were updated to reflect the new mayor. Under the standing City Council Committees category, adjustments were made by the new mayor, taking into consideration expertise, availability, interest, and opportunities for rotation. I'd also officially added a line item for block captain liaison to accurately reflect an assignment that's been, we've had an active assignment of a block captain liaison to that program. So I asked for that to be added. There's no fiscal impact associated with this item, and I would recommend that we consider the updated City Council Committee assignments and approve the assignments as presented.
Move to approve?
I'll second.
Well, are there any questions?
In public comments.
Any questions, comments? Oh, before, go ahead, Bee, and then I'll make one.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to indicate that, you know, as a person who is a full-time district attorney, I have been on the Peninsula Regional Law and Public Safety Committee, which means quarterly. And this year, our mayor wanted to be on that and for this year that she was mayor, and asked if I would step down for this year. So I wanted to explain that because that is, and obviously, too, she invited me to come and provide input at that meeting, and so forth, which I am inclined to do as well, too, because there's obviously information there that is important to our city that I have from my work that I'd like to offer. So I wanted to let that know. And I'm also, I told her I was willing to be the delegate for the South Bay Cog if Councilmember Wilson, you know, was unavailable to do it, if he wants to do it again this year. I know he said he wanted to do it last year. So I just wanted to make those statements. But other than that, I'm fine.
Okay. So for the South Bay Cog, I have Pat as the delegate and you as the alternate. Is that correct?
Me? I'm sorry. Say it again?
The delegate to the Cog for this year is you. And you are the alternate, as it was last year.
That's fine. I'm right now in the president of the LA Division, so I'm busy.
I understand. And you and I discuss all of the other responsibilities that you have. And my comment that I was going to make is that I wanted to thank Bee for allowing me to be on that committee. It's something I've wanted to be on since I've been on the council. But I've been fortunate to be on lots of other programs. So this was a good opportunity for me, but I appreciate that she did that. So now I'm ready for a motion to.
Public comment.
I'm so sorry. Public comment. Hearing none. I'd close the public comment now.
Move to approve the committee assignments.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Here we go. 14D. Update from the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee regarding Republic Services field operations issues and expansion of mother truck staging site locations.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. I have staff do this part.
Sure. Thank you. Because I don't do it.
Evening, Mayor and council members. Over the past seven months, as we've discussed at multiple meetings lately, staff has handled an enormous amount of calls and emails regarding Republic Services dissatisfaction from the residents and a variety of concerns that were not limited to, but include the following: trash pickups, lower staff levels, new employees, unfamiliarity with the routing system, the decline in customer service, staging locations of mother trucks, and residents having to pick up trash once a mother truck leaves the location. Between August and December, staff has had multiple meetings with Republic Services operations staff. And we have also reactivated the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee made up of Mayor Mersch and Councilmember Wilson. The results of those meetings and discussions has led to some of the operational improvements that we've been able to see, as well as the potential for changes that would hopefully and ideally have positive effects on not only operations, but satisfaction by residents. So this report tonight is meant to give you an update from the most recent Solid Waste and Recycling Committee meeting. And I don't know, Mayor and Councilmember Wilson, if you want to discuss that or if you want me to go through the rest of the report and summarize some of that. So I'll leave it to your discretion, how you want to proceed.
I think we can do it. I think we can do it. You know, do that. Thank you very much. And I'm going to let Pat kick it off after I make just one comment. Thank you for the staff report. On page 148, the last paragraph about staging locations and routing, I think it's important to just add, this paragraph is correct, but I would like to add to it that it is more than the concern amongst residents when it is staged at a singular location for multiple days during the week. It's also the same two locations for several years. There's, it's more than just the two days a week. So I wanted to add that in there. And to facilitate the discussion that we're going to have and to share with you, we kind of started off our last meeting by breaking down the bigger issue of what's going on with Republic now into three basic categories, two of which they talk about here, which are the day-to-day operations, which includes the collections being done and on time, trash escaping from the scooters and the mother truck. Then we have this issue of the staging locations of the mother trucks, kind of another category. And then a bigger category or a third category that I'm going to call contractual, which has to do with issues that can't be solved at the local level in categories one and two that need higher escalation within the company to get procedures done, like maybe they, bless you, maybe they need to buy new equipment to, if their trucks are breaking down, this, that type of thing. So that would, that would be included in there. And the recycling issue, we, as some of you may know, they had a fire in their mixed waste recycling facility. So that meant, bless you, that they can't do our mixed waste recycling. No household waste is being recycled right now. recycling. No household waste is being recycled right now, and that's not gonna come back online till maybe the end of this year, or the beginning of next year. So again, that's a bigger contractual issue, because they have a contract to recycle for us. Now, we're meeting our state requirements and the contract requirements because we have so much green waste. So that's basically the three main categories that we're talking about, and we're trying to work on all three of those categories simultaneously, which is a lot of fun, so.
Well, thank you for letting me kick it off.
Well.
I don't have much to add. You've covered the important parts, obviously. I think, well, in our meeting last week with the-
This is the man?
The committee meeting where we heard from residents about, and this is not the first time we've heard of it, of course, about parking all day long, multiple days in front of the same location. What resulted from that, I was really hoping to hear the results from our decision, I guess it was the week before last. Last week, they should have, Republic should have, gone to half-day stops in front of eight different locations. And is there any way to verify that?
So, yes, they did this, however, there's one location that, they're gonna provide me additional information, it might be for safety reasons, it's Buggy Whip Drive and Crest. Also, they flip-flopped, not really sure why they did that, but for Tuesday morning, they were supposed to be at Out Rider and Eastfield Drive in the morning, and then be at Portuguese Bend, Southland and Chetel Road on Tuesday afternoon. They accidentally flip-flopped it.
That may not be a big deal, except they told us what they were gonna do and they didn't do it. Again, like, I don't know how relevant that is, how material it is, except they're just not doing, what they-
With you, Councilmember Wilson, and I will tell you, I checked in this morning with our operations manager, and that's what I'm doing now, and Chris would do the same, and so does our frontline staff, to say, "How are things going today? Are you meeting at the locations? Anything that we need to know?" And it's not, it's twofold. It's for one, to know, "Are you doing it?", but also, "Is it working?", and if it's not, "Tell us why", so we can-
And that's exactly, I figured, okay, this'll be like a period of time to learn, because I think we were a little nervous about just, I don't know if the locations were randomly chosen, or if there was some thought given behind it, but I thought, okay, at the end of the week, it's not gonna be perfect. But, I mean, I had residents asking me about the results of our meeting, the ones that didn't attend, I said, "I got the schedule out, and I read the schedule, at least as it affected their home", and I said, "So on Thursday morning, you can expect it there for half a day only. If that's not the case, please let me know, because this is what's been given to us", and-
Exactly.
It would've been nice to just know, well, I don't know, I don't wanna drag this out any further, but you said one location-
It's being looked at a second time, is Buggy Whip Drive and Crest?
Yeah, I know the location.
Yeah, and so I'm-
That's my street, so I knew it very well. It is hazardous, because they were perched, there's right up that, just where you go up from Crest up to, there's a little hill, they were perched at that hill, so when you're coming out from Buggy Whip, you're, it's blind, you can't see somebody coming in, because you have to go on the opposite side of the street to pass their truck, which is taking up one lane. So that is, that's actually a really unsafe location.
And this is why they're trying, they're trying to evaluate the sites, and so, like, for Buggy Whip, you know, the comment made by Artie was that Buggy Whip could be used up and down because, you know, in any area because of the wide easements, but, you know, they selected this place to look at first. Or Wagon Lane, Portuguese Bend Road, they were there the other day, and then we got notice from them that, you know, "We're not sure that this is actually gonna work", you know, so I think they're trying to explore and see with these-
Well, there's four of the locations, there's a total of fourteen. They select, no, they only selected eight, eight out of the fourteen, right?
That's, that's correct.
So there's six other locations that they could, I haven't heard from a single resident that they would object to a half-day in front of their house one day a week.
I have.
Okay, well.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have heard, so, I have heard from the ones where it's all day, multiple days in the same week, and those have to be resolved. We can't continue to burden our residents with that, so.
Can I ask a question, though? So I don't see Upper Blackwater Canyon in Portuguese Bend on here, and the truck's there all the time, and it's not on the list. I see Wagon Lane in Portuguese Bend, but it's Upper Blackwater in Portuguese Bend a lot, like-
I've never seen a truck there.
I have to drive-
Well, I know you do, so I'm, if you say it, I'm just saying, isn't that strange, that I, I used to see it a long time ago. It used to be in front of the CaZarian's house, but I haven't seen it there in a long time.
So, can I just-
It is right.
They're not at Blackwater anymore.
They stopped that? When?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't, we can't.
I drive by all the time.
Before we open it up to public comment, I would just like to share a little bit of information. These areas, these locations that are shown were approved by both the Fire, Republic Services, the Traffic Commission's safety engineer for, like you mentioned, that it's not safe at, on Buggy Whip. When these were approved in 2009 and 2010, so it went from the Traffic Commission then to the City Council, these were all approved. There were hearings held, all of these locations were approved. Over time, people would object, or they would say there's a safety issue or something like that, and one by one, these all got eliminated, and they weren't going anywhere. Now, I'm a horse person. I personally know that there were locations that have said, "That's not good to put it there, because it's near the ring and the horses go by there." I get all the reasons why people have a problem, and I used to have the trash truck on the easement by my house, so I know what's involved. It's not, it's not nice. What we are hoping to do is have as many locations as possible be used, so that we're spreading it out for shorter periods of time and shorter numbers of days amongst everybody. Trash is produced by all of us. When they designed this city, they did not design it in mind with trash collection or evacuation. Those are two things that were not there. We have a lot of restraints here. Things have changed since 2009 and 10, when these locations were approved. What Republic is doing now is trialing these out to see how they're working under current conditions. They may need to be looked at again by the traffic safety engineers to see the type of thing that Bee is talking about. So that's a little bit about these specific locations. They're also looking at, hopefully, some new locations. A lot of us have said, "Oh, I know, they can go here and they can go there", and so they're gonna be looking at some of these and seeing if those can be brought back to the council, to go to the traffic safety engineer to relook at them. As far as, so we have a lot, again, we have the other issues of just getting your service picked up. I mean, to me, that's the most important thing. We've gotta get our trash collected. Talking about the staging of the mother truck location, my fellow committee member did agree to let me have a small unofficial group of three residents who have been involved in this process to kind of unofficially brainstorm, and see if we can come up with some other staging locations, address the ones they have, and kind of work on this issue. And right now, that's all that committee is looking at. They're not looking at a whole bunch of the other safety things. It's that. We have, our first meeting is scheduled for the ninth of February. The reason it's scheduled so far out is to give Republic time to do the very things that we're talking about, looking at these locations and giving us their feedback. So if I have that feedback, when I go and meet with these people, we can all be educated about what's going on out there. So before we go on with anything else, I'd like to go ahead and, does anybody have any questions of the committee?
No, I appreciate all you guys do. It's a misery, so thank you very much.
No, seriously, it really is, so thank you very much.
This is harder than fire control management. Okay, so, I'd like to, excuse me, so I would now like, if there's no other questions for the committee, I'd like to open it up to the public comment. Anyone? Stacy?
I'll say something. I'm Stacy Markle, speaking, Chair Jack. Thank you so much for everything you've done. Our street's been very quiet. Everyone is so excited. I've heard that there's been a lot of complaining going on at the other streets where the truck has tried, you know, tried to pick up trash. Pat, your promise came true. They came for half a day last week on a Thursday.
Thank you.
Wonderful. No big deal at all. We also, every single street in this community is going to have a traffic issue, I think, for four hours out of the day. We need to be careful and just be aware that it's there. Everyone's gotta make the sacrifice. I know it's inconvenient, but we do need our trash. I think Republic Services is really an important asset to us. We have to be careful and mind our tongue, I think. I don't think we're here to rag on the trash services. Pat and I talked about this the other day, because, you know, it's a great service to have a hand service come to our homes, and we all appreciate that. We have a lot of odd driveways that we're dealing with. It's great to have this little truck, so we just have to put up with it. I think it's working great. I just wanna say that. It's working great so far for us. Four hours a week, no problem at all, and it shouldn't be a problem for anybody else. Any questions for me?
No, I would like to thank you, Stacy, just for the record, Stacy is one of the three people I have chosen to work with on this. I chose people who have been involved because they already had a lot of information, and it wouldn't take them as long to get up to speed on the whole concept, because it's pretty complicated. And also people who were looking for solutions to the problem, not just to rag about the problem. And I will also say, I didn't necessarily pick necessarily the easiest people to work with, because Bee-
Throw something at them.
But I will say, we do have a lot less trash on the street. I've noticed that already, immediately, less trash. You know, that's a really big deal. Honestly, we shouldn't have trash everywhere, and it just looks great, so I think it's been working great.
Maybe more coyotes, because there's less noise from the trash.
Or they're eating it.
Now, come on to the next round. What committee?
What other committee do you want me on?
We'll keep you busy with this. Thank you, thank you. But, but the reason I, thank you, Stacy, so the reason that I mentioned that is because I didn't just pick people that agreed with my concepts or my approach, because I'm too stupid to do that. Okay, any other public comments? Ray.
Ray Walker, Eight Wagon Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to spend my entire evening in the pleasure of your company.
Appreciate it, Ray, thank you.
It doesn't sound sincere.
I'm here about the staging. I'm a resident of some forty years, and have lived with the various, you know, trash collections for all of that time. Councilman Black is correct that Blackwater has been used previously, but it has not been used for quite some time now. Probably, you're leaving too early in the morning to know that.
I thought it was definitely some of the-
Well, they might have, they used it a bit last, this past year.
Yeah.
Yeah. At any rate, the prior service used Wagon Lane as a staging area. They pulled their large truck on the ocean side of the street, and they did not, they just came back and very carefully turned, using the cul-de-sac at the end of the street, where the, Wagon Lane is, is the original street ended at my house, because I have the first house that was ever built in Rolling Hills. And the additional portion was not, was not there. They put an elbow on it and put the extra houses on the end. There are only seven houses.
George Trujillo, Trujillo, you're talking about.
Now it ends at the Trujillo property, yes. The easement at the end of Wagon Lane, the original Wagon Lane, is a 25-foot easement, and it was built for the purpose of fire trucks and that sort of thing, the wide enough to be, you know, maintained for safety. The prior collection agency used that, as they were supposed to, to turn their small trucks. They put the large truck down at the end, the beginning of the street, and brought the small trucks back and made their turn there, and they used the easement. The current, well, at that time, the Greenbergs, Dr. Greenberg was ill, and Mrs. Greenberg asked to have the trucks moved, so they came to Blackwater. They were there for a while. With the new, the new agency, I'm pleased with the people that I've dealt with there. I'm not pleased with the responses all the time. They're very pleasant, they're knowledgeable. For example, in this past week, the city has called Miguel twice. I've called him three times. He's been very pleasant each time, but he's not on site, so he cannot see that, he cannot guarantee what he is saying is going to happen is actually happening. And what's going on now, I'm not complaining about the noise. That's fine. Most of the people that live on my cul-de-sac are either sleeping at that time and will sleep through the noise, or they are deaf. So the only people that actually hear those trucks are the new family that has just moved in to number one, and myself, and maybe, maybe the caveos at, in the old Gracia de O house, but they're meditating at that time, and it doesn't really bother them. At any rate, we're a close neighborhood, we know what each other's-
You're a little hurt.
But I would like to tell you that what's going on now, either the city is going to have to buy me a new driveway, or we have to do something about this. These people, times have changed. There was a time when private property was respected, now, instead of convenience, and now, so the right way of doing things was better than the convenient way of doing things. It's not the way it is now. Yesterday, well, let me start, just to give you a brief history of what's going on. I have a, an alarm on my driveway that tells me when someone comes in, because I live alone, all right, and I put it in for that reason. However, it has proven to me to be more advantageous as a, I don't even know how to tell you this.
We can fill in the blanks.
It's, it's better as gauging for me why my property is deteriorating and how it's happening. On the eighth of January, I left, I finally went to work at a little before noon. I had lots of things to do at home on the internet, and there were eleven alarms set off. You have, in order to set the alarm off, you have to come over the hump at the top of my driveway and start down the driveway past the apron, all right? There is a giant crack there that has been forming and increasing, and it's, the driveway's deteriorating. So eleven times in the morning of January eighth, nine ti, and I called then that week and saying, "There's trucks and things turning around. I hear the alarm goes off, and I can, and so I look and I see them. It's your trucks. Could you do something about it?" The city said they would, they would talk to someone, and they gave me the information to talk to Miguel, which I did. Then on the ninth, we have, I have collection on Mondays and Thursdays. Interestingly- Interestingly enough, the week before that, nobody was collecting, so there was no noise. On the 11th, there were nine times I left for work at 11 o'clock. There were nine alarms set off on Thursday. The following week, Monday was a holiday, so the 16th, there were 12 by 10:30. There were another 10 by 11:30 on the 18th. And this morning, there were 20, or today, there were 20. All right? That's just the garbage trucks. Because they will not use the easement, although I have spoken to the individual truck drivers, I've spoken to Miguel, spoken to the city, the city has spoken to them again. And Miguel, I think, is just, I could guess that he's doing his job, that he says he'll speak to them, but it's not helping. Because the convenience of swinging that truck around and making the wide range, one of these days they're going to take out my mailbox, you know, is what's doing the problem, creating the problem. And there's nobody there to watch them, except me.
Is this the mother truck or the scooter trucks?
All of them.
But the big mother truck is...
Oh, yes, absolutely. Now, I offer to you the contrast of the former, former service that never once did that. They would make, you can come up, if you come up the driveway, you come up this way, and Wagon Lane turns like that. The easement goes like this, it's 25 feet, and my driveway sits here, which granted is a huge wide apron and very easy. So you could either bring the truck and come over here and do a three-point turn if you want, or maybe even with the small trucks, if you just swing right, wide on the road, you can make the loop and come back. But no, it's easier to come this way and just, they don't even try the easement, they make the turn into my driveway, cracking it wide open. Now, fortunately, my dog will accept a fair bit of activity, so she loves the opportunity to hear the alarm and bark and bark and bark, right?
It's great fun.
The only other person I have a complaint about is the, is the mailman, or the paper boy that comes at 4:00 and 4:06 in the morning. Entering at 4:00, I don't know why he uses my driveway to make the turn coming in, but he uses it coming out at 4:06 at the same time. So that's the, but I can sleep through those, or I'm, or else I'm up through that, at that time, so it doesn't matter. But the garbage, you know, that's a major weight of your problem, and I think needs to be dealt with. In addition to that, it's not a particularly safe place to pull out of when you have to weave through the truck, the mother truck on one side of the street, and the other trucks on the other side. Sometimes they park all on the one side. But it's, it's difficult, because it's a blind turn in. I've got to tell you that today's drivers come, you know, hell-bent for leather down that road, down Portuguese bend, and around that blind bend, so it's...
Things have changed. Thank, thank you, Ray.
I'm always asking Artie to cut back the shrubbery so that we can nose out a little farther and see who's coming around the bend. So I ask that, as much as I love spending these evenings with you, I ask that we don't have to do it too often again. And maybe somebody could, could deal with this.
We understand, your, the, the issues are very valid points. Staff is here, they will work with Miguel. Miguel is actually, when you say he's not on site, Miguel is actually in the city a lot, but he may not be with those drivers at that location, seeing them do that, but we can see that.
Well, granted, he tells me he'll call them right away, and there's a momentary silence, and then by 4:00, they're back again doing the same thing. So it's in the morning, and it is in the afternoon both times, so I'm, I'm hearing for the first time now, it's only supposed to be, what, half a day? I have the pleasure of their company all day long.
This week?
Yep.
Does anybody have a schedule?
Day was 20, I said, today was 20 times they did it.
It's supposed to be Monday afternoon.
Depends according to their schedule.
But they were there before noon? I mean, all morning?
Well, I heard them all morning. There was a large white truck. I mean, I'm not running as fast as they used to, so when the alarm goes off, I usually can get to see who's at the top of the driveway, but not always. So this morning, I can't guarantee you that it was all their trucks.
Well, and it probably was one of their, you know, one, one of the mother trucks that they use is, is white.
Well, we have a new neighbor across the street. We find, because that's the other thing.
Yes, that sold one.
Yeah, so he has some trucks, they have some trucks there too, doing things. But he has spoken to them, and I have spoken to their drivers, and I found, once I spoke to them, they were very cooperative. Now, he may have a new guy that comes in one day or something, you know, and doesn't know the...
Well, we will look, we'll look into it, very valid. This is a very, this is the type of feedback that we're looking for. This is the type of things that we're looking at, at these location, and it points out what the difficulties are in trying to find a location, even if it appears that it might be workable. If people aren't doing the way, doing it the way it's expected to be, there needs to be some tweaking on it.
What they were doing initially, when I first put the new alarm in and started noticing this, was they were parking one of their small trucks in the easement, so none of them could turn around in there, leaving that there and then using my driveway as the turn. And that started the habit.
And thank you, Ray. We, we appreciate the comments. These are the type of things that we learn from our individual properties and hearing from you that need to be passed on so that we can address the issue. You won't have to come and visit anymore.
As much as you would like to, yes.
No, I thank you for your time and the help with this.
We're, we're trying.
You all do a very good job. I very pleased with council, so. And, and any other, any other public comments? Was we?
Thank you. Actually, I'm glad I stayed. I wasn't going to talk about the trash issue, although I have spoken with Christian about it. I think it's good to know what they're supposed to be doing. I can tell you, they're not on saddleback. They park at the bottom of my property in a way more dangerous situation than what Bee was talking about. There's a street that T-bones in on one side, the truck is here, this is the bottom of my property. It's a curve down the street. If you want to go around them coming up, you have to just hold your breath and hope that nothing's coming. So, and, and it's a mess, but you also told me that they'd be there four hours. They are never done before noon, so they're right at 7:00 banging the thing on the ground. And it's, you know, I had it for 17 years, and then for 10 years, they were gone. So, and suddenly they were back, so.
I don't, I don't see this on our list.
That's what I'm afraid of.
If you look on...
I'm, I'm 71, so they're parking by 68.
Saddleback Road, Road Runner, between 36 and...
42, but that's not her. That's not her. 60, they're right at the bottom of my property.
Yeah, but you're not close to...
Like, try to get hers.
You're not close to Road Runner, though, are you?
Yeah. Right across the street. That's what I'm saying, that's the street that comes in.
That's the T-bone, that's the T-bone street, yeah. And I wouldn't say, I, I would not make a guarantee to you that it would only be four hours. I would say it's half a day. So there are more, however long it takes them to do the morning run, and that's another thing that we're asking them, is you used to be able to do the whole city, your route in the one day. Now that's happening more and more often that it's, it, you may have to carry over into the next day sometimes, or you're having to work later in the evening. We oftentimes see trucks coming out. When I left the meeting on Friday, Friday night, the truck was, was heading out at 6:00, 6:30, so I, not to be picky, but I, it may not be four hours, but it would hopefully just be morning or afternoon, so. Thank you, thank you.
Also, they used to wash the truck at the Poppy Trail Triangle. They would use the hose and wash the truck. So you'd be trying to go up saddleback, there's a, you know, a road that comes up that you can make, it's the triangle. So that was always interesting to try and negotiate, too. I do think the spot by the riding ring is probably a better spot, but that's just me.
That they are hoping to use.
Once the dumpsters are gone, maybe, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Hearing none, close.
Make a motion, receive and file, second.
Thank you very much.
Well, Pat and I will be getting back to you on more good news. Okay. Matters from staff, are we at receive and file? Fire fuel abatement and code enforcement quarterly report for the fourth quarter of 2023.
And we're the city council. Yeah, this is the quarterly fire fuel abatement and code enforcement report for December 1st to December 31st, 2023. In that period, there were a total of nine cases that were closed, including six dealing with vegetation or dead trees. 10 cases were open, including six involving vegetation or dead trees. Currently, code enforcement is working on 12 open cases, which also include, which include five dealing with vegetation or dead trees. On January 11th of this year, we had a quarterly meeting with our outside agencies, LA County Department of Agriculture, Ways and Measures, they have another division here that does fuel abatement for vacant properties. They reported that they sent out letters to the vacant property owners of depots within 200 feet of neighboring structures, and also 10 feet from roadway easements. And they were the ones actually that, that did the action on 79 Eastfield Drive, that's that half-built structure, they kind of stopped work on it and they let it go. And it was filled with weeds, and Fire Department actually got on their case, they contacted Ways and Measures, Ways and Measures was actually the department that went out there and cleared that site.
Wait, this is the one with the house on it?
Yeah. With the partially built house.
I thought Ways and Measures only did vacant.
They do, but that one, they sort of considered, you know, there's a, yes, they'll, they'll have, yeah. So apart from that, we also met with PVP Land Conservancy. They reported that they purchased a new mower not too long ago to help clear with, secure the land in the conservancy. So that covers the equipment costs. However, labor, labor costs are, they're clearing the areas that have been funded for, and so they are looking for other funding availabilities to clear other areas. On January 16th, we met with Southern California Edison. They reported they still do their year-round inspections twice a year, and that's really to go around and make sure that there aren't any vegetation growing near their power lines. If there are vegetation needs to be cleared, they would contact the residents before clearing that vegetation. So they'll remove...
The residents' responsibility?
It's the residents' responsibility if they have to remove the entire tree. The only thing that they do...
I'm talking about the vegetation around, like, like weeds.
Around the power line, they would clear out.
That's, wait, is it the residents' responsibility to clear the weeds around, or the, the low-growing plants around a power pole?
I guess that would be the, yeah, the residents' responsibility, it's low-growing. My understanding is that they, they clear out the, the area, I think it's like 12 feet from the power lines, you know, in and around that area. But if it's outside that area, then that would be the homeowner's responsibility. They, they also wouldn't clear an entire tree or cut down an entire tree, they would only clear the vegetation around the power line.
Edison hack job, they just give it a flat top.
And then for anything in the road easement, that, that would be RHCA responsible for that. So we've included the attachments for the open cases and the ones that are opened during the fourth quarter and closed during the fourth quarter. Those are included as attachments, and these were actually printed on Thursday, the 17th? I'm sorry, Wednesday, Wednesday, the 17th. Our code enforcement officer went out there the following day on Thursday and had some other code cases, I guess, that aren't part of this list. Yes, new cases.
I have...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Well, he, he's not, you know, he doesn't have any biases in, in terms of where he, he decides. He goes out there, he sees the vegetation, and then he'll send the letters out to the, the property owner for that, so.
I do have a, a question. Your observation of this, are we getting further behind on our stuff, or are we keeping pace with the amount of activity? Madam City Manager, what, 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 what do you say?
Well, considering that I'm just now kind of getting closely...
I understand, I understand.
I think Mel is doing well. I think he's out there clearing, and I know John's been working with them and taking care of the site he gave him along. Some of these are actually in my queue, too, like the dark, the dog-related ones, which I'll be addressing, but in response to the areas, I think, I think now they're moving a lot quicker. Yeah, it's satisfactory right now, I think it's okay. I think we're going to continue to monitor it, but...
Because that's what we want to know, is like our bang, you know, the bang for the buck, that, we're getting on that. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, public comment?
Yeah, I'm glad to see 79 Eastfield Drive, the vegetation's been taken down. So now I just learned another something to do. Again, the ag commissioner considers apparently abandoned property as vacant property, and they take jurisdiction.
I don't know that that, it might have been a special one-time arrangement. I don't, I don't, I would not necessarily make that assumption.
I'm going to take the positive approach. That still leaves the structure, the half-built structure, which is probably termite-infested, fungicide-infested, and clearly a continuing fire hazard to the residents, local residents. Don't think LA County's going to do anything more, at least I haven't, I haven't heard any indication that they are. So is the city going to move forward to having that half-built structure removed?
Would you like the answer to that, or would you like the answer to that?
The, yeah, the, the city is pursuing its, its, its legal recourse as, as it prenates to that, to that structure.
That's all I need to know. And, yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes us. We'd like to recess to closed session, but... I'm sorry. In favor, I, okay. We're going to recess into closed session about anticipated litigation, da-da, da-da, da-da. I would like to, oh, we had a resident, I, I'll do that at real adjournment, if we want to adjourn in her memory, okay?
Okay, so you're reconvening to open session at 10:50?
Perfect, all right. Madam Mayor, if I may, I'll give the closed session report.
Thank you.
City council recessed into closed session at 10:07 PM pursuant to the single item listed on the agenda. The city reconvened into open session at 10:50. No reportable action was taken, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Marguerite Housky, who finally passed away. Yeah, I think she was old, really old, and has been bedridden for a long time, so, anyway. So...
But they moved out.
I beg your pardon?
Bob Schmidt died also.
Oh, he did. You go to the service? I had a...
Yeah, I could know it.
Yeah, I had a scheduled conflict, but we had adjourned in memory of Marge, when Marge passed away. And we send a card and a little like certificate that letting the family know that we adjourned, that a meeting was adjourned in their honor. For memory, not, it's in their memory, not honor, right? Their memory. Thank you. Okay.